Good morning. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors for our June 6, 2006 Election Day Board of Supervisors meeting. Roberta, could you please call the role?
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Michael.
Here.
Supervisor Flynn.
Here.
And Supervisor Parks.
Here. Thank you. This is item number three on our agenda is our moment of affirmation. We don't have anyone here for that this morning, but being that it's election day, I would like to read part of a special message to Congress, the American promise that was given by Lyndon B. Johnson in March 15, 1965 regarding the Voters Act. And it reads, "This was the first nation in the history of the world to be founded with a purpose. The great phrases of that purpose still sound in every American heart, north and south. All men are created equal. Government by consent of the governed. Give me liberty or give me death." Well, those are not just clever words, or those are not just empty theories. In their name, Americans have fought and died for two centuries, and tonight around the world, they stand there as guardians of our liberty, risking their lives. These words are a promise to every citizen that he shall share in the dignity of man. This dignity cannot be found in a man's possessions. It cannot be found in his power or in his position. It really rests on his right to be treated as a man, equal in opportunity to all others. It says that he shall share in freedom, he shall choose his leaders, educate his children, and provide for his family according to his ability and his merits as a human being. To apply any other test, to deny a man his hopes because of his color or race, his religion, or the place of his birth, is not only to do an injustice, it is to deny America and to dishonor the dead who gave their lives for American freedom. Our fathers believed that if this noble view of the rights of man was to flourish, it must be rooted in democracy. The most basic right of all was the right to choose your own leaders. The history of this country, in large measure, is the history of the expansion of the right to all of our people. And we hope on this day that everyone will get out there and vote." We'll now move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Supervisor Michael, will you please lead us?
Yes, please join me in saluting the flag of this great nation, hand over heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion and a second on the minute. See no objections, then that passes, and we'll now move on to agenda review. And Mr. Nicole is taking over for our CEO, Johnny Johnson. Welcome.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, we have one correction to the agenda on Agenda Item Number 30. You have a revised Detachment 1 for the Schedule of Service Rates and Fees. There is a change on the first page for the PZA Susceptibility Testing. The proposal for '06-'07 is $13, not $16. And on the third page, there is a revision for the transfer of credit. The 2006 and '07 rates should be $155, not $165. And you've been provided copies of this attachment.
Thank you, and we will hear that at our time-certain item at 10 o'clock. With that, do we have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
Second.
A motion and a second. No objection, and that passes. And we'll now move on to our Consent Agenda Items, 10 through 22. Would anyone like to pull any for discussion? Or do I see a motion?
No.
We have a motion and second on the consent agenda. See no objection to that. We'll deem that as approved also. Our next item on the agenda are our public comment cards. We have four this morning. Penny Bane is up first, and then Michael Kootnik. Good morning.
Good morning. Madam Chair, Supervisors, Mr. Nicole, I'm happy to be here this morning. I am Penny Bane. I'm a 20-year resident of Oxnard and Port Rainie, Mian, Ventura, actually all combined. I'm here this morning representing the Friends of Channel Islands Harbor, the major lessees at Channel Islands Harbor. Our president, Michael Kootnik, is here also this morning. Just again to thank you for your ongoing movement at that harbor. I've lived here for 20 years, and this action that took place three weeks ago with the Coastal Commission just set a pace for this harbor, adopting unanimously your majority of the board. Movement, it's a great thing. The sign is up for the boating center at the harbor, and I thank you, and let's just keep moving forward. You've made a lot of people very happy. So thank you. And, by the way, good luck to our incumbent supervisors. It's a great day for the County, and actually, today is the 20th anniversary of my first day as an employee of Ventura County, 20 years ago today. So that was a great day for me, too. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, then, is Michael Kootnik, followed by Carol Dean Williams.
And it was not so many years ago, and good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Nicole, that Penny had a retirement party at the Wailsdale Restaurant. And you can see now she is very active again in the community, and especially with the lessees. We had an executive committee meeting yesterday of our lessees association, and Randy Short made mention, relative to the Coastal Commission, appearance of staff and how well we did at Coastal Commission, that if it was any other county, if it was any other city, there wouldn't be city or county staff present like there is at Ventura County every time an issue goes before Coastal Commission. And I must say, staff did well, Channel Islands Harbor did well, and the County of Ventura did very well in that, in setting certain precedences that will follow through the rest of the campaign to achieve those things that need to be done in Channel Islands Harbor. I thank you for the consent agenda. I was one of those people on the consent agenda, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, our last two speakers, Carol Dean Williams and Albert Alfred Egert. Good morning, Mr. Williams.
Good morning. Carol Dean Williams, 61-year resident of Ventura. I would like to call to your attention three members of the board, since it only takes three. And if this applies to you, you can raise your hand so the public and I can know what three I'm talking to. You've passed an ordinance, 4322, that you have no idea what you even passed. Here's an example. The Ventura County Star has contributed an in-kind contribution to Linda Parks to let her blog through the Ventura County Star. They charge a whole lot for inches. That exceeds the $600 limit. An in-kind contribution is no different than a cash contribution. Is that why? Is that why no food or drink allowed? Is that why the Ventura County Star reporters are allowed drank in the boardroom? Drank in the boardroom? I wanted to bring drinks, too, but I read the sign that says no drinks. You'd have me arrested and charged and prosecuted, but not the Ventura County Star, because they give in-kind contributions to board members. And it's not listed on the campaign reports. I just came from elections. Okay. Mr. Bennett, next year, next June 207, will start with $60,000. I'm going to be a candidate. I have to start with zero. Zero versus $60,000. Incumbent versus candidate. You don't even know what you passed, because you're violating your own ordinance. Do you know what your Ethics Commission said about your CEO, Johnny Johnson? Do you know what the Ethics Commission said? Here's my folder. Here's my folder. And I've got three other items, or I would read it to you. So I reserve my time for other items.
Thank you. You have two minutes and 13 seconds reserved. And our next and last speaker is Albert Alfred Egert. Good morning.
Good morning.
Almargeddon Corporation: Destruction and Corruption. For the Ventura County Record, Almargeddon Corporation directly, unlawfully, and nonconstitutionally sponsored by and straight out of the pit of Hades comes shame on you, Kathy Long. Shame on you, Steve Bennett. Shame on you, Judy Michael. Shame on you, Lynn Krieger. Shame on you, Jack Preveler. Shame on you, Randy Short. And shame on a host of others who are part of the- Preveler, shame on you Randy Short, and shame on a host of others who are part of the black, cold-hearted conspiracy to literally destroy and displace the Channel Islands boating community and replace it with large slips and large pockets so you and your cohorts can reap the newly planted benefits. Of course, that will be after the destruction of the existing harbor and complete displacement of the current citizens and recreational boaters via the Hatchet and Over Price Amount Corporation, Allmark, sent out with the blessing of the Three Stooges who reside on this board of supervisors, Long, Bennett, and Michael's. These boaters' homes and future boater recreation will have to serve as collateral damage that one incurs while building a new Babylon Harbor in the Channel Islands Harbor. Boy, if this isn't one for the fruit of the poisonous tree doctrine, then may God show all of you engaged in this conspiracy mercy for your black-hearted souls. Point of fact, Supervisor Kathy Long and her team of black, cold-hearted cohorts slid it down to the Coastal Commission hearing held in Costa Mesa last month and used near form instead of any substance to sway the commission to ruin their favor, to start construction of their new Babylon Harbor. How did they achieve this goal? Simply put, the Channel Islands Harbor Patrol with Jack Preveler and Lynn Krieger's guiding hands engaged in a sweep of the harbor starting around September of two thousand five, eliminating all small boats that they possibly could by citing said boats with a variety of violations and eliminating said boats from the harbor and leaving said slips empty. Then at the commission hearings in Costa Mesa, Kathy Long and her team of cohorts, during their presentation, claimed the Channel Islands Harbor has over a hundred and fourteen empty slips, mostly thirty feet and under, swaying the Coastal Commission to allow the construction of larger slips. However, never once was it mentioned how these hundred and fourteen slips became empty and using the excuse for these empty slips as most people with thirty-foot boats or less put them on trailers and take them home. Very lame, but whatever works to get the job done, would say Kathy Long. Now these evil goblins are working the Bahia Cabrio Yacht Club in Marina, my home as well, eating out the substance of the community by using their unlawful and unconstitutional leaseholder in Allmark Corporation to enjoin with them to price the citizen and recreational boater of this community out of their homes and recreation by grossly overcharging live aboard and slip fees. And it's working, because there are many empty slips here now, and they are not being leased out presently. They are just left empty. Perhaps another conspiracy is in the making for the Coastal Commission to be deceived and swayed once again by the same diabolical tactics as Kathy Long and her black, cold-hearted cohorts did so well in May at the Coastal Commission hearing. Supervisor Long, Bennett, and Michael's, the shame and the blame for the destruction and displacement of our boating community and other boating communities within the Channel Islands Harbor by use of your diabolical tactics, unlawfulness, and disregard for constitution and the provisions thereof have permanently put a black stain on your integrity and public trust. To us citizens and recreational voters in the Channel Islands Harbor, you are no longer honorable people, and we demand your resignations from representing the people of Ventura County forthwith. Why? Because you three supervisors, which have been empowered to stand guard over our rights and freedoms, instead have elected to perform a stealthy and destructive encroachment to destroy them. Faithfully submitted, dated June fifth, two thousand six, Albert Alfred Egert, California State Citizen. Thank you. Oh, by the way.
Perfect, that was exactly your time.
Long, Bennett, and Michael's, get your fidelity bonds ready, because I'm going to need the best defense your money can buy.
Mr. Egert, you have exceeded your time, and I was just complimenting you that your speech ended right on the buzzer.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Our next item on the agenda is our Board Comments, and how about we start on the right side with Ms. Long?
Thank you. Thank you, and good morning. I'd like to start with first submitting a list of three residents in the third district to adjourn in memory of, certainly to be missed by their family and community. Then I'd like to just make note of what I think will be a wonderful enhancement and partnership for our Channel Islands Harbor to continue to prosper, and that is that Oxnard was awarded the California Welcome Center designation. And in being awarded that, it'll be, they'll be an important partner in the tourism area with the Oxnard Convention in Visitorsboro, and I know that our harbor leadership has already made contact with them and congratulated them and look forward to working with them. I think it'll be a great opportunity, again, to continue to build on our harbor. Another comment, I'd like to note that as we have been working with the efforts to get a medical home for children in our county, we successfully, the healthcare agency, has opened a new medical center Wednesday, and the center was opened at, I'm looking here to see real quick, Healthcare for Kids opened a new center that will provide the low-cost, no-cost medical insurance in that medical home, and it's been opened at the Public Health Department Building on Loma Vista Road in Ventura. So that adds up, that's one, two, three, four centers I think we now have opened that provide that medical home and that single point of entry for children, to get children into a good medical care system that we offer at the county. And speaking to today being an opportunity for all registered voters to exercise their right to vote in this great democracy we have, and also on the agenda, we have the celebration of the kickoff of the Greek Heritage Week and Greek Festival. I pulled off of the Internet, the ancient Greek government, which speaks to Greek government at the time of Aristotle was divided into monarchies, oligarchies, tyrannies, and then democracy, and talked about each period as democracy evolved through Greek government, and that after the Dark Age, that there was certainly a lot of changes in government and how government was evolving in the Greek community. And in five-ten B.C., the city-state of Athens created the first democratic government. And when my Greek friends come in this morning, I'll just make a little more note of that. But all that to say that today is one of those days that if you serve in elective office, you do encourage everyone to participate. We know it's challenging for a variety of reasons why folks may or may not participate in the voting process, but just say to my two associates here on the board that I wish you the very best, and trust the voters, and I look forward to continuing to work with you, and ask for everyone to get out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Flynn?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list, and also make the comment that the voting machine, if you will, worked very well, I thought. It was simple, it was quick, and now we await the final report from the vote. But to count the vote as you put the ballot into the machine, which is pretty neat. So I commend our elections officials for moving in that direction.
Thank you. Did you want to close in honor of some people? Okay. And with that, Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you. I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. Number one. Number two, I'd like to point out to everybody that today is National Hunger Awareness Day, and across the county, and particularly with our Food Share Organization and our Interfaith Organizations, people will be trying to call extra attention to the need for us to do a great job of making sure all of our food pantries and all of our organizations are trying to take care of hunger and the hungry people here. There are twenty-five million Americans that are considered food insecure in the United States, eighty thousand of them in Ventura County. So just a good reminder for all of us. Also, remind everybody, today is the celebration of D-Day again. It's not as big as the sixtieth celebration of two years ago, and I came across something very interesting in reading about that over the weekend. I thought people might find out, but when they went to give the code name for D-Day, all of us know, most of us know today, that it was Operation Overlord, but when they went to the British code name developers, they had, they had to take a lot of time to develop these code names in advance, and they had not gotten around to asking that, and they needed the code name right away, and so they only have one approved code name at that point in time that could be used. And it's very important that the code names do all this kind of stuff, and it was, D-Day was supposed to be called Operation Mothball, and Churchill just overrode that, created his own code name, and it just changed. So anyway, just an interesting aside I thought I'd bring up. Good luck Election Day to our incumbents here and everybody else that's out there for election.
Thank you. Supervisor Michaels? Yes, thank you. I would ask that the board adjourn in memory of this citizen from Moor Park who was a World War II veteran, and ask everybody to get out and exercise your responsibility. People talk about the right to vote. With that right comes the responsibility of guarding the democracy, and that is participating in choosing your leaders. So I ask everyone, if you haven't voted, please do so. There really are no excuses any longer. You can become a permanent absentee and vote in the comfort of your home if you so desire. But I wish my colleague much good luck today. It has been an interesting cycle for both of us, and I won't speak for her, but I can say that I'm really glad this day is here. So it can all be over. And with that, I wish everybody a good week. I would like, for the record, people to know that tomorrow morning, Supervisor Parks and I and the rest of the team will be leaving for New York and will not return until the weekend for the visits with the bond-grading houses. So emails, any other things that happen as a result of the election will not be answered until the weekend. But thank you for your good thoughts. Thank you. Supervisor Michaels? I would also ask that we close in honor of the three people on my list, and just wanted to call out one individual, Robert Landy, who was the person who wrote the Electronic Designer's Handbook, which became a standard textbook and guide, and he will be missed as well as the other couple on my list. Talking about Election Day, and I've, yesterday I met with a mayor of a couple of villages in Germany and talked about their elections, and I have a friend that is now in Australia, and he said you get fined, I think it was seventy-five dollars, if you don't show up and vote. I heard about another country that's offering raffle tickets for a prize if you vote. But it's true, there's a lot of people who are registered and don't vote, but also there's a lot of people who aren't registered, and I really noticed that as I walked neighborhoods and had to keep skipping house after house after house of people who haven't registered to vote. So hopefully, we will become a less apathetic nation, and people will get out there and vote and realize the importance of that duty. With that, we'll go on to our next agenda item, and that would be item number, I guess our regular, our regular agenda. That starts us off with item thirty-six, so that's our Harbor Department, and welcome, Ms. Speaker.
I actually believe it's thirty-five. It's the bottom of the previous page.
You're absolutely right. But it's you on both, isn't it?
Yeah, that's right, either way. Good morning, members of the board, Mr. Nicole, Lynn Krieger from the Harbor Department. We have two items this morning. Item number thirty-five is merely the request for authority to submit an application for grant funds for the launch ramp, and this is now about, the so-called new launch ramp is thirty years old. It is badly degrading. We have done repairs and maintenance, particularly over the last ten years. You'll see in the packet, what we are proposing to send to them is a slight reconfiguration, partly so we don't aim boats from the launch ramp directly into the small boat marina, and partly to make the turning easier, especially now that larger boats are being hauled. Obviously, it will be up to the Department of Boating in a lot of ways whether they want any work done on that initial proposal. So all we're asking you for today is consent to submit.
Thank you. Do we have questions or a motion? Move the recommended.
A second, and I'd just like to compliment staff also, and this is just one more example of moving forward and trying to make sure we have investment dollars coming into the harbor, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, see no objections, and that passes. And now, item thirty-six.
Yes, item thirty-six, which is also, I hope relatively straightforward. This is a continuation, under the rate and fee schedule that the Harbor Department submits to your board, I have authority to do short-term lease agreements of up to five years. We have a building adjacent to the small boat marina. It's quite a small cinder block building with a little additional garage storage space that had been vacant for about fifteen years when I arrived here. So we considered what uses were allowed under the Public Works Plan and entered a short-term lease agreement with a yacht broker to see how that would work out. The five years is now up. It has been a successful agreement. They have been very good tenants, good about paying their rent, and we are looking at a minimum rent and combined minimum percentage rent of about sixty thousand dollars a year, as opposed to the building that used to be turning in nothing. So we would just like the board's authority to continue that agreement. We are not suggesting it go out to bid, only because, as you know, there's going to be a fair amount of activity related to Fisherman's Wharf and some surrounding leaseholds, and with the disruption, this is just a short-term agreement, I believe it's two years, with three additional one-year options, gives the board the authority to remove people from that building if we need to for other uses.
Thank you. Are there any questions or a motion? Yes, Supervisor Flynn?
My question is, County Council, in your review of the lease, did you check with the letter that is written by the Harbor Director? See that anything that goes into that, that she put into the letter, also appears in the lease itself? Let me just read you something, then ask you the question. It's on page two of the letter, the board, it's the third paragraph down, and it starts in the, I think it's the last, the next to last sentence. The county has the right to refuse to extend the term at the end of, initiate term, or any of the pre-one-year option terms, if the county determines the option. I assume that that's in the lease.
I haven't reviewed the lease for that. Robert Oriana of my office has reviewed it. I'll give him a call and see if that has been done. Alternatively, if you'll give me a few moments, I'll look through the lease and see if I can find that.
It is on page four. It says, "Within thirty days after timely receipt of the concessionaire's letter of intent to exercise the option to continue, the county at its sole option may notify the concessionaire that the current term shall or shall not be so extended." So the county in its sole discretion will have the choice whether the lessee can, or the tenant can stay.
My question is, County Council, is that satisfying whether it's in the letter supporting?
I believe it does, Supervisor Flynn, yes.
Thank you for your question. Do we have approval? Second. Have a motion and a second on that. See no objection, I'm glad it's short-term, gives you the flexibility, so that does pass unanimously. We'll now move on to item thirty-seven, and I see Ms. Scholman here from our Behavioral Health Department.
Good morning, Chair Parks Supervisor. It's Mr. Nicole, Linda Scholman from Behavioral Health. As your board knows, you, during budget hearings last year, gave us a hundred thousand dollars to see what we could do to help meet the needs of detox, which was a clear missing continuum, but you asked us to come back and tell you how that money got spent and how we did, and here is our report. I think we're proud of the results. I think the staff has done a really good job of identifying clients who are willing to also do the long-term treatment, using detox as a mechanism to get them able to enter into real recovery treatment, and not using detox as a way to feel better so that we can go back out and use again later on. So with that, I can answer any questions. The rest of the results of the study are here.
Supervisor Bennett?
Where do you see the program going next year?
Continuing exactly the same. We'll go ahead and continue our contract with Tarziana. The issue will simply be how many people, with the hundred thousand dollars that is currently in our budget for next year, we estimate that we would be able to serve about half the number of people that'll come knocking on our door, so.
So two hundred thousand dollars would serve?
So two hundred thousand dollars would serve all of the people?
I, I think we estimated that we needed two hundred and fifty as a total amount. Lengths of stay go up and down, so I think two hundred would certainly get us a lot closer.
Thank you.
Do you foresee having a facility here in Ventura County?
I think in the long term, the only way that a detox facility would be viable is if it was in combination with a residential treatment program and funding for adult residential treatment isn't easy because most of the funding streams don't cover that. And so we're looking at figuring a way to put together some kind of combination program with adolescent, adult, or there's gotta be a way where there's enough different funding streams that can come together to make that happen. But right now, the, the energy has been towards adolescent residential and really asking us to move forward on that. We have found a potential partner in that. Expect to come back before your Board to talk about that in more detail as we fine-tune that. But I'm more hopeful about the creation of adolescent residential in the next year than I am about a detox setup.
Well, so without that residential for adults, we still have a program out of Tarzana.
Right.
So whether we have it in Tarzana or we have it in Ventura County, we're in the same situation in terms of not having the residential.
Yes.
So the reason why we wouldn't be looking for Ventura County instead of Tarzana is just because we'd like to do the full comprehensive program if we move forward.
Tarzana is a comprehensive program of-
With residential?
With residential and adolescent residential. They are the full continuum. We've had discussions with them about coming and opening up a similar program here that isn't something that they've expressed interest in yet. They haven't seen enough numbers of viability to make that something that they're interested in today.
Okay, I, I misinterpreted what you said earlier. I'd just let the Board know that we're working now at the Mental Health Board and the Alcohol Drug and Advisory Board to get a, a subcommittee together to look at having, a look at dual diagnosis because so many people with mental illness also have addiction problems and vice versa. People with addiction problems sometimes are masking a mental illness. So being able to address this significant majority actually of, of our clients in that comprehensive way, I think it's a good step towards at least getting the committees together. Supervisor-
Madam Chair, certainly agree with that and appreciate that the Mental Health Board is focused on this and it's a good report. It's always valuable to have more information with a special focus on our community. I would expect and maybe you can give us something at a later time, what are other counties, perhaps our size, who don't maybe have the volume or the organization to have in-county, a site like this? Because you look at the statistics and alcoholism is still one of the largest addictions that impacts so many ages and across the spectrum. So I, I appreciate having reports, a good baseline for us and it's something for us to continue to keep on our radar as, as a need in this county. But also agree with the, with the advocates in the community that the adolescent one is, should be a priority. Our private sector hospitals are, are a good resource for us, but we need something that's open to the public, available for the public adolescents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments? Do we have a motion?
Proceed.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you for that report.
And thank you for following up. Did we ask for, did we ask for that?
Got it. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Workforce Investment Board and I see Ms. Elaine Crandall here. Nice seeing you this morning, welcome.
Good morning Madam Chair, members of the Board. Mr. Nicole, over the course of the number of years, your Board has appointed members to the Workforce Investment Board. Before you today are six candidates, two from private sector, two from labor, one from education and one one-stop partner from our private sector. We have Jed Harris from Oxnard. He's the plant manager with Pure Tech Industrial Water. Alex Teed from San Paolo, the Senior Vice President for Luminaria. From education, we have Kay Faulkner-Bojer. She's the Dean of Business Economic and Community Development and Off-Campus Programs for Ventura College and with the Ventura County College Community, sorry, Ventura College Community College District, sorry. Tony Skinner with labor is with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, interested very much in setting up construction programs. Victoria Powell and also with labor is with the Communication Workers of America attached with Verizon. She's interested in working with our one-stops to develop training programs for the upcoming new jobs, high, high-wage jobs with Verizon. Victoria Jump, who happens to be with us today, is with the Director with the Ventura County Area Agency on the Aging, one-stop partner focusing on older workers. Should your Board approve the recommendation today, we'll have thirty-four members. We still need to have one from each of the districts with the exception of Oxnard, although I do expect to have one from Supervisor Parks' area by July. So we're getting close to having a full Board.
Thank you. We have a motion-
Second.
And several seconds. And I appreciate your recruitment efforts there and we have a really well-rounded Board and a lot of people that can help others get jobs and learn how to work our workforce so we can get good skilled labor too. Thank you very much. So we have a motion and a second and that passes unanimously. We'll now move on to items from our County Executive Office. Our first is item thirty-nine regarding our tobacco settlement program. Good morning, Mr. Dursey.
Good morning Board Members. Paul Dursey from the County Executive Office. This is our recommendation regarding the tobacco allocation and the recommendations are allocate eight point six-two-five million dollars and the sec, adopt the recommendations as presented in the attachments one and two and receive the allocation recommendation from the Oversight Committee and that's attachment four. The good news is that our Office's recommendations and the Allocation Committee recommendations mirror each other. So we are in accordance with their recommendations and we agree with their recommendations. The bad news is that tobacco settlement funding is suspect in the long term. So we are aware of that and we are working with the committees, both committees, Allocation Committee and the Finance Committee, to account for that issue because in the current fiscal year, oh-five, oh-six, we have about eight-hundred thousand dollar shortage that we are using tobacco designation to fund that allocation. Subsequent year, right now, we are additionally using designations for that funding. So we have a, kind of a smooth landing in regard to reduced revenues. We're hoping that that money does come in, but we're not expecting it. So we, and we are working with both committees to make sure that if the money doesn't come in and the revenue comes down, that we're in a position in oh-seven, oh-eight to reduce the funding levels for the various programs. The, I think that's all I had to say about this particular item. I think we do have a, the Chair of the Committee, the Allocation Committee, make some comments. If there's any other questions, I'd be more than happy to try and answer.
Thank you. It is something we have to be really aware of. It's hard to fund programs if you don't have ongoing revenue streams. Ms. Gosin, do you like to come up?
Thank you.
It's been wonderful having you on the Board and I-
Well, thank you.
Didn't realize we had term limits, but I'm glad that you were able to ascend to the Chair and have your wonderful input on that Board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I've enjoyed it too. Good morning. We are appreciative of the fact that the CEO's office was concurred with our work on the budget for six, oh-six and oh-seven. We were able to, even, even though we had used some of the set-aside funds to make up for what the tobacco companies are hoping to withhold, we were able to make up some of the deficits from last year's allotments to the committees and to receiving agencies. And I think probably everything that you have in front of you is pretty self-explanatory. If anybody has any specific questions about any of our funding requests, I could certainly be glad to answer.
Do we have any questions? Well, I know it's very difficult to have to decide when you have so many demands and needs out there and limited funding, so I really appreciate your work, the work of the committee because I know some difficult choices had to be made and it sounds like you've come up with some, some really wise ones and appreciate that.
Move the recommended action.
Second.
Motion and a second and seeing no objection, that passes unanimously. Thank you again for your answer. Our next item on the agenda then is our item forty regarding a MOA with the SPOABZ.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, we're bringing forward for its first public hearing the three-year agreement with the Special Peace Officers Association of Ventura County. In achieving this three-year agreement, we've accomplished some of our policy objectives, which is to have multi-year agreements to provide for labor stability as well as getting a consistent rate for the flex credit allowance for health care for the employees. It calls for a first-year increase of salary benefits and retirement equaling five point two-three percent and a three-year not to exceed twelve and a half percent. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you have regarding the agreement.
Thank you and that's cumulative.
Correct.
My congratulations to the team and I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Seeing no objection, that passes and our congratulations to the whole negotiating table to come up with a resolution and a nice long-term contract. Appreciate that.
Thanks very much.
Our next item on the agenda is item forty-one, also with the CEO's office regarding temporary position allocations. Good morning, Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, good morning Chair Parks, members of the Boards. What I have before you today is a policy and a delegation of authority in, to establish temporary position allocations. As a result of our meetings with the Succession Planning Committee and some efforts there, we're identifying different aspects and areas of succession planning that need to be addressed. One of the areas is transitional employment when it, when it, when a position is being vacated for whatever reason, whether it's a separation or, or a retirement, that oftentimes we have key positions that go vacant for a while and we'd like a transition of institutional knowledge as well as training and so forth to occur. Our current structure does not allow backfilling of those positions and some of the smaller departments don't have other allocations that they can use to temporarily use in that situation. So what we have before you is to establish a policy that will allow us to create temporary positions to backfill key positions as we transition employment within the county, as people exit the county, that we can keep a continuity of business point. So that's what's being proposed today. Any questions?
We have a question Supervisor Bennett?
Not a question, a comment. I think this is part of the overall approach that we're trying to say. We've got a whole issue of transition and a whole issue of recruitment that we're gonna have to deal with, so I compliment you for this and encourage us to stay creative. We're gonna have to stay creative in all kinds of areas to be able to solve this problem.
Yeah, we will be back. This is only one segment of the entire issue that we're dealing with, so we're kinda chunking away at it piece by piece.
I move the recommended action.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
And that's just, you're showing no impact in terms of funding. You're not seeing that this might affect funding levels?
Well, the, the Department will have to manage that within their own budget. There'll be a time period in which two people will fill one allocation. I don't think that will be significant for the time period that they're gonna be-
And it's something that would be absorbed within the specific departments.
Within the Department.
It just gives that flexibility.
That's correct.
Thank you. Oh, we do have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Seeing no objection and that passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue the good work there. Our next item on the agenda, also the CEO's office, Mr. Dursey, and this is regarding our five-year capital improvement program.
Good morning again, Paul Dursey, County Executive Office. This is a receive-and-file item and this is our annual five-year capital improvement plan for the fiscal years oh-six, oh-seven through oh, ten, eleven. And it's a, it's an annual process, like I said, and we like to think of this as a living document and it, we change it as the year goes along and next year it'll be different than it is this year. Generally, it's a listing of potential needs and there's no specific priority. And if you look at it, there's about a half, over a half a billion dollars worth of items in there and in case anybody didn't know, we can't quite afford that. So it is, it is a list, there's no priority. I think there are two items that are on the, in the budget for next year and that's the infrastructure radio project for Sheriff and Fire Communications and then there's a rollover for the crime lab that they've been working on for, for a couple of years. The, one other item of note is the Todd Road Jail and the Juvenile Justice Office, Juvenile Justice Complex Office Building. We have done some initial evaluation and we are working on those. So those may, they're kind of working from a, a plan into a more specific plan as, as we go along. So maybe within the next year or so, we will have something a little more specific on those two projects. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to try and answer them.
Just a question, this is a receive-and-file item. Is there a point where we actually formally adopt it?
Well, we would adopt those two items, for example, in the budget.
Okay.
As we go along, as they become part of the budget is when, or potentially mid-year as we go along, we may identify a project that we need to go with and, and we would adopt a, a specific project at that time.
And it sounds like we are not necessarily committed to performance if we have a basic wish list. It's just something that is giving our intention if the funds are there.
That's correct. These are listings submitted by departments. Some of them we agree with, some of them we say, well, you know, if we were gonna prioritize them, they'd be a different priority, but we've said we will, we'll list them and, and put them out there. Certainly there are items on there that have a higher priority than other items and from our Office's standpoint, we, we are starting to work on those particular items.
Okay. Thank you for that. I'm, I'm used to a little more formal kind of capital improvement plan adoption period just from, coming from the cities.
Right. And Public Works actually does have a, a much more specific plan where they have a listing and a deadline and a completion date, those types of things on their public list projects. As far as the capital project listing from a general fund standpoint, it's much more fluid.
Well, thank you for that. Appreciate the answers. We have a motion?
Move the recommended action.
Second.
Got a motion and a second and seeing no objection, that passes. Thank you, Mr. Dursey. Our next item is a policy matter and this first one is Supervisor Bennett, item forty-three.
I'd just like to ask, recommend to the Board that we appoint Alan Saltzman to the Commission on Human Concerns.
Got a motion and a second, seeing no objection, that passes. Congratulations, Mr. Gosin. Our next item then is a recommendation by Supervisor Flynn, item forty-four.
Yes, I recommend that we approve the appointment of Martino Binzon to the Ventura, County Ventura Civil Service Commission. That's one motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, seeing no objection, that passes and congratulations, Ms. Binzon. Our next item is our probation agency. This is item forty-five. I see Cal is here for this one.
Black Grant.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board and this morning, Mr. Nicole. Nice to see you. I'm asking that your Board today authorize your Chair to sign the attached resolution on our juvenile accountability grant and authorize me to submit the application for the fifty-seven thousand dollars and sign the grant award. That's the good news, fifty-seven thousand dollars. The, the bad news is, is this, this money has supported our juvenile drug court for approximately seven years now and, and in the last three years, what we've seen is a steady decline in the amount of funding. So two years ago, we were able to, to fund the program at a little over two-hundred thousand dollars and now at fifty-seven thousand, we just can't fund it for the whole year. We told your Board last year that we would seek additional funding and in fact, we have a multi-agency committee that is seeking that, that funding now. So although this funding will only allow us to get through until about September, I'm still hopeful that we'll be able to find additional, additional funding. The, the CEO's office has assisted in this. Sue Hughes has, has made contact earlier with Congressman Lois Capps. She visited our facilities, she looked at the programs, the drug court as well as our, our mental health, juvenile mental health court, and we're hoping that she will be able to, to assist us. We're not gonna know that until probably September. Behavioral Health has sought a hundred thousand dollar grant, which won't support the whole program, but will help. And we should know that, the results of that by September also. The state, at least the Governors May Revis provided additional funding in, in, in the budget for both juvenile mental health courts as well as an increase in our Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Act funding. But until that budget is approved, we're really not gonna know what, what money will be available. So I'm cautiously optimistic that we're gonna be able to find, find additional money. Should that not occur, I, I may return to your Board sometime in early fall and ask for your assistance, but at this point, that's low priority. We're, we're doing our best and I think that there's some real possibilities. In addition to the drug court, we have the same problem with our Adelante Court, our juvenile mental health court. Our funding will go a little, a little further into the year, but by the end of November, we're gonna be running out of funds there. So our hope and the, the proposals that we've put together really call for a dual diagnosis court. The court would have, would have calendars, separate calendars for each of those programs, but we think if we can put it under one- we think if we can put it under one umbrella, we may get some cost efficiencies, and we think that it's much more innovative, because as you know, there's really an overlap between those two issues with both juveniles and adults. So I'm hoping that the state money will be there. I know the sheriff is optimistic about the adult, $50 million for adult grants. Ventura County in the past, the sheriff has had the lead on that, and we had a very successful adult program. So I'm hoping we'll have funding for both of these programs, and we'll be competitive. So our commitment to the board stands. We're continuing this agency, as well as others involved, the courts, behavioral health. We're continuing to look for funding. I'm hoping we'll be able to get that before the program runs out, and that's our strategy at this point, and I hope it works out, Supervisor, to be successful.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or questions? Just incredibly valuable programs, and we sure don't want to lose them. I do like the idea that even in this sector, we're looking at trying to get that dual diagnosis, you know, and look at the full picture. I had heard of, I think, seventy percent or something is the amount of people that you find that meet both criteria.
Meet both, yes.
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
With that, that passes unanimously.
Yep.
I will, thank you.
We have two quick items, and then we'll go to our 9:30. Our first one is item forty-six, which is emergency contract authority with Watershed Protection District. Good morning, Shada.
Good morning, Supervisor Parks, board supervisors, and Mr. Nicole. I'm here before you today for the recommendation of Peter Shada in Watershed Protection District, and I'm here before you today to report on emergency contracting authority being used for two projects. One is the Santa Paula Airport, the Santa Clara River Project, and the other one is the Pole Creek 2005 Emergency Re-Basin Project. Both of them are moving along well. We expect the airport to be done before the end of June, and the Pole Creek to be done before the end of July.
Thank you. A motion on forty-seven?
Second.
Motion second, that passes unanimously, and motion on forty-eight. Oops, sorry.
No, motion on forty-six.
Forty-six.
No, we did forty-seven, now we need forty-six. Motion on forty-six?
Second.
Second.
That passes too, so both forty-six and forty-seven pass. Thank you very much. And our last one is our correspondence agenda, which is.
Move receive-and-file.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and with that, we can move on to our time-certain items. Our first time-certain item is with our Sheriff's Department, if I recall correctly. It's our first 9:30. Yes, I'm right. Sheriff Brooks wasn't going to be available for our budget meeting, so he's asked if he can present his part of our budget for his department at today's meeting, so if he'd like to come up, then we'll have your presentation, and.
Quite 9:30, can we do that? Walk slow. Walk really slow. We'll go with his.
Good morning, Sheriff Brooks.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Mr. Nicole, I do appreciate the opportunity to meet with you this week instead of when it was originally scheduled. It's my one opportunity during the year to give you kind of a state of the department, and I appreciate the opportunity, and I know it's a busy day, it's Election Day, I wanna make sure we all get out of here in time to vote for me, so I'll try to make this as short as I can.
I already did, I voted against you.
Oh, good, thank you. I have a couple of things that I want to give as a precursor to my comments. We have submitted increment two requests. Those have not been recommended by the CEO's office. I'm fully aware that this is the very beginning of an economic, hopefully extended turnaround, that you have priorities in terms of building up reserves. I want to highlight our priorities to you. It's my job to make the request, it's your job to decide if you can afford to do them, so it's an education process that will probably continue on into the next budget cycle, I realize, but I'm grateful to have the opportunity to talk about it. The first thing that I'd like to highlight is the issue of recruiting and retention for our department. One of the reasons that, although we have increment twos that involve deputy sheriffs, the reality for me is if you gave me the positions, I couldn't fill them, because I can't fill the vacancies I have today. So it would be foolish for me to come before your board with an expectation that I would obtain those positions until I can actually sustain the number of allocations that we have and to maintain that workforce. As you take a look at this chart, looking at deputies, in 2002, we had 842 deputies. The allocations were 842, and 2006 is 748. Of that, 670 are filled, and then when you delete the people that are in the academy or on medical leave, it's an actual operational number of 640. We've been working hard to maintain the level of safety the public expects with that number of officers. It's put a tremendous workload and pressure on the officers that we have, because we're working them so much overtime to fill our minimum deployments that that becomes another incentive to look for other employment after they begin to wear out and have had enough of the overtime. So we have 78 operational vacancies, 30 additional people that are on leave of absences at this time, and 16 pending service retirements. We've received a lot of help in that regard from the CEO's office and your board in terms of recruiting, and we'll talk a little bit more about that recruiting effort in a few minutes.
Supervisor Flynn.
Madam Chair, I attended the Academy graduation.
Yes.
And I noted that there were fewer people in number there receiving their graduation diplomas than in years past. I remember when Sheriff Bill Hill was the sheriff, there probably were 100 people.
Right.
Something like that. So there's a big difference, and.
There's a very large difference, and you'll see, and part of what happens with recruiting is it takes us about a year and a half from the time we find an applicant to him graduating from the academy or her, and we didn't hire for two and a half years, so we had no one in the pipeline when we started hiring. The next class is projected to be around 30 deputies, last class was eight. So we're starting to turn around, and the last class you saw and the one before were relatively small. The ones succeeding that should be larger classes.
Okay, good, thank you.
Lot of prep work, but that's an accurate observation. When you, take a look at what's happening, the recruiting effort has been successful. We're getting more applicants, we're getting quality applicants. We've done some very creative things that I'll discuss a little bit later with the support of your board. The other problem besides the competitive arena in terms of recruiting is retention, and as you take a look at the next slide, this has been our 12-month experience. We've lost 69 deputies in the last 12 months. That's 11 percent of our deputy workforce. Our normal pattern is four to 5 percent in a year, so we're running double that attrition. If we were running a normal attrition pattern, we could keep up with the hiring. It's the number of people that are leaving, in addition to the competitive recruiting environment, that are making that very difficult for us. So about one in the third deputies a week are leaving, and we're used to having a much smaller number, and that historic number goes back for years, so this is an anomaly, but it's one we project will probably last for at least two or three years, because we have the demographic bubble of people reaching retirement age, a tremendous amount of competition, and all of those things kind of collide at a time that the federal government is hiring in massive numbers in law enforcement, the Border Patrol, the FBI, and our local competition is doing the same.
Supervisor Bennett has a question.
Yes.
If I could, for the benefit of.
Absolutely.
Of the public that's listening. Number one, you have allocations we just can't fill. We just can't find qualified people to fill those at this point in time, so that's a problem that is across the board, all the other, I mean, Los Angeles is experiencing this, everybody's experiencing.
Everybody's experiencing it to various degrees.
Right. And then of the 69 deputies that have left, do you have a breakdown of how many of them left for retirement, you know, this demographic bubble that you're talking about?
It's a very good question.
You're a great straight man, you know?
Appearing before you before I anticipated that question. Here's the answer.
Increase his budget.
And I would note, too, that some other law enforcement agencies out there have such great benefits for retirement that they actually make more if they retire, so because we're not, you know, as excessive as that, we are at least not facing as much of a retirement as.
Everybody has a different combination of benefits and salary, and what you're finding with a very educated workforce, years ago, local residents applied with local agencies. Now they get on the internet, and they shop agencies like you would shop for loans. They let them compete against each other, they all market them, and when we take a look at what happens to our recruiting pool of applicants, you'll see what happens to us as a result of that level of sophistication. But in terms of why did they leave, out of the 69, 31 left for retirement. About half of that was service-related retirement, and about half of that number was medical. We will always have that. The demographics of hiring a lot of people in the '70s now leave us with a lot of retirements at this point. Nothing we can do to change that for a period of time. That will continue between three and five years. The ones that we are concerned about are the ones that move out of state, the ones that go to other law enforcement agencies locally, or other, and other is primarily people that take private sector jobs. That's the part of the attrition that we do want to have some impact on. We want to make this an attractive place to stay, cut down on the attrition level so our recruiting efforts can be a little more successful. This is what the department will look like at the end of the term that I'll be entering in if my mother and my wife vote for me today. There'll be very little left of our command staff, our executive staff, and even our management staff. We're now thinking in terms of how do we create success for the 75 percent of the managers that won't be there in the end of 2011. And we're having to hire those people today. It means we can't dip in quality, we need to hire people that are promotable, that are capable of advancement, that are top drawer, because we're thinking now with people in lower ranks that in five or six years may be running that department or running at very significant levels, and so that is an additional challenge to just coming up with raw numbers. If we were looking for just people capable of being deputies for 20, 25, or 30 years, that'd be a different issue, but we're having to replace our supervision, management, and executive ranks at the very same time. So the question is, why is it so hard to hire? This is the reality that we're running into with our current recruiting drive. We need about 200 applicants a month, we test monthly, we've received assistance from the CEO with support of your board to do additional marketing, to use overtime to take existing deputies, put them in the field. We're at job fairs, we're at public venues, we're trying to develop a more sophisticated recruiting package for next year, but we're getting close to that 200 applicant level. Of the 200 applicants, they're all internet shoppers, most of them have applied to 10 or 15 different agencies, they're pitting them against each other, combination salary benefits, location, housing costs, all of those things, and only about 100 show up to test. We hold their hands, we call them, we remind them, we do everything but pick them up at home and bring them to the test site, but they found other options usually by the time a test comes up, even though the tests happen very frequently. Of that, 40 passed the written and physical agility, eight are hired, and we graduate 4.8, which is, we get two and a half deputy sheriffs out of every 100 people that come into the process. So that is not unusual, that has been kind of a traditional pattern. The level of competition at the front end, we used to have more people show up, but the attrition rate through the process is fairly historic, and we're used to seeing that.
Madam Chair, just a comment.
Absolutely.
I think the academy had, start out with 33 people or something like that, pretty close to that, and only half, less than half remain. I mean, it's a rigorous course.
It's very rigorous, it's a state standard in terms of academies. We believe we run one of the best ones in California. Some are college-run programs, they have a little higher success rate through the academy, but a lower success rate when people get on the job than ours. So we do introduce an element of stress that we think produces a better applicant, one that has a better chance of succeeding during the course of their career. Some of the things that we'd still like to do is, as I mentioned, we've had a recruiting effort that we'd like to see enhanced, that's one of our increment two requests. We don't have any designated staff. We used to have a designated recruiting team during hiring times that we would, that's all they would do. Now we pull people out of deployment, usually one person to coordinate. Eventually, he's gotta go back to his job, and periodically, he's gotta leave to go back to his job. When we actually do site visits, we pull deputies on overtime out of their deployment, they're already working overtime. It's very difficult to manage, and we'd also like to assist them by giving them a professional marketing plan and materials. Right now, we produce some things, but we'd really like to improve the level, because you're standing booth by booth with everybody else's agencies, and they look at your materials, that's how they judge what your agency's like, the quality of the people you're presenting, and we've presented them with some very good recruiters, but that's probably gonna be something that needs to happen for two to three years. This is not a real short-term effort, it's gonna take years to catch up on the recruiting side, and that's why we submitted that increment too. So those are the things we'd like to do next year, we'd like to target veterans as well, and we'd like to showcase the things that make Ventura a very desirable place to work, because we think that's one of the features that we have. We have to offset housing costs, but it's expensive to live here, because it's a great place to live, and so that's one of the marketing tools we're using. The incentives that we've offered have helped for employees to actually refer people. We have people in the pipeline that will probably result in rewards, but it takes about a year and a half for someone to see a reward after they recommend somebody, so they're still waiting on that, but we have seen some results.
We have another question, Supervisor.
Sheriff Brooks, if I could. Under the issue of trying to stand out from other law enforcement agencies, we, I've had a number of deputies talk about the issue of serving time in the jail, and that that's, can you sort of elaborate on that? How much has that time in jail increased? I mean, are personnel that are coming in having to spend more time in jail than eight years ago, 10 years ago?
Working the jails.
What's your impression of how that's affecting us?
It's varied, and that's one of the key things. It always has been for our department. We have always lost people to other local agencies, because at 22 or 23, two years in the jail seems like a long time, and somebody can offer you a patrol car tomorrow, and that's always, not in big numbers, but it's always been a source of attrition. We went up to being a six-year stay in the jail before things started to turn around, so that is a much longer, we have much better jails to work in than we did years ago, and that softens a little bit. Once we started hiring, though, the morale issues related to stays in a jail assignment began to dissipate. With the next large class, they'll see a lot of people moving back to patrol again, so we're seeing that already begin to turn around. We're beginning to promote people, which we hadn't been doing. We've got some creative collateral assignments we've been giving to jail deputies, so that seems to have kind of reached the peak, and now that's becoming less and less of an issue.
Do we have statistics on what the average length of stay in the jail is now?
Well, right now, they did a full term of six years.
So a deputy coming, deputy who came in last year is gonna be six years in the jail to figure out.
Right.
And what was it, eight years ago or 10 years?
It's averaged historically between two and a half to three and a half.
So more than doubling the length of time in jail.
Right.
And that is having an impact on it.
Right.
And then in terms of, you know, the people that we're recruiting now, what are we telling them in terms of the length of time that they'll probably be in?
Well, we're trying not to be specific on that, because we can't tell you what it's gonna be, and if you give them a specific and you don't keep that promise, then people are upset. What we tell them is that with each succeeding academy, that rate drops, and people are getting out quicker, they're talking. We've, one of the things that we've done is hired provisional deputies, which we have done in years past, which means before another agency can grab an interested applicant, if we don't have an academy coming up for three months, we'll put them to work in the jail with minimal training. We give them about three weeks of training and put them in the jail working with a jail deputy. That's usually a very favorable experience for them. They're not as afraid of the jail once they've actually been there and seen it. They find out it can be, it can be an enjoyable place to work, and they're seeing people come in and out, and the hiring of provisionals has also pushed people into patrol. So now that they've seen a regular rotation start to patrol, it's not as hard of a sales pitch as it would have been when they were staggering them. When we weren't hiring and you've been there six years, that's bad news, because you may be there 10 years, but now that hiring has begun, it's helped.
And I know you have, you view a number of benefits of having our deputies doing that. Are there any other creative things we can do to keep it down? I mean, when you get in that six-year range, it sounds like, from the outside, and I could be completely wrong, that that is having a deterrent.
Right.
And is there anything creative we can do when we say, hey, this number starts to go above two or two and a half years, that we can do to try to make sure that doesn't happen?
Not really. The only things that you can do, you know, we've done some internal things. We let them work in the courts, we have other specialized assignments they're eligible to, they're even eligible for other assignments in the department sooner. We let them, you know, we use them for evacuation teams when we had fires, so they were out in the field. Those kind of things all help. We let them move between jail facilities, so the variety helps an awful lot in that regard. Anything beyond that, you'd be basically taking a patrol deputy and moving them back into the jail against their own wishes, so this guy could get out in two and a half years, and then you just have another unhappy employee beside the one you started with. So we, you know, it's far less than LA County does in their jails, but it's more than we're does in their jails, but it's more than we're used to. And we believe with another solid year of successful recruiting, we'll be able to drive that back into more of a normal range.
Any other way to staff the jail with other kind of personnel that are not scheduled to go out and become deputies that you think would be?
No, we've, you know, we've already looked at that. And the jobs that they're doing are all the hands-on, physical security of inmates that only deputy sheriffs or somebody equivalently paid could do.
Sheriff.
We always look at that, Rachel.
We have another question, Supervisor Lynn.
It's, no, just a comment. It seems that being assigned to the jail is kind of equivalent to going to Siberia somewhat. And if that issue can somehow be managed, so you reduce that work, the number of years, it'd have more incentive, I think. I think people hold a lot of pride in being a sheriff, being as a deputy sheriff, the work that that person does. There's a lot of pride there. And I think that has a lot to do with people coming into a particular police department or sheriff's department, is the pride that's there.
Right.
It's almost like, you know, in the Army, there are certain, there are certain parts of the Army that people have a higher regard for than other parts. So pride is really essential.
It is essential. And we recently went through the jails on an inspection tour, talking to deputies who've been there, you know, three, four, or five years. The morale was surprisingly high. The concept of working in a jail may be more of a disincentive before you actually work in a jail. And our jails are very well-run. They're clean. I wish they were spacious, but they're too full of inmates right now to be spacious. But they're not a bad working environment for a deputy sheriff. It's a great learning opportunity for them. And we've tried to provide them with as much variety within that context as we can. We don't have a pecking order of assignments internally because everything we do is life or death. Everything we do is important. A jail deputy is no less important than a patrol deputy or an investigator. And we try to emphasize to them that that's an essential part of their training and something that's beneficial to their total career.
I see that we definitely need to do everything we can to help with that recruiting, particularly when you all funnel it down and you end up with two for every 100 or so. My question is, you think that this will eventually right itself in a few years? The position allocation request, that is, does that have a term to it?
It doesn't have a term. Our estimate of that and the other increment two items that we have are that, you know, for that specific assignment, it'll probably be at least three years. Because the demographics of the number of people retiring will continue on, three to five years possibly. After that, it will dissipate because we didn't have a big hiring bubble that would, that would produce those kind of retirements. So it does have a range, and my anticipation with any positions that we were to garner in the next year or two is if they were for a restricted period of time, like overcrowding positions for the jail, well, the jail's not always going to be overcrowded if we were able to expand Todd Road. But the staffing will just move over to the staffing for that new expanded facility. So they, they would change titles. They probably wouldn't go away. They would just mitigate the need to ask for more positions later.
Would that come back to the board, then, if it were a three-year term for a recruiter? When you change the titles, if the need isn't there?
Would it?
Yes.
It certainly could.
Okay.
Depending on the board action, it could certainly be granted for a period of time.
I know we have.
It could be reviewed annually as well.
We do have a couple other 930s. There's obviously lots of questions and interest by the board on this item, so I don't want to interrupt you.
Okay, but that would certainly be acceptable to review every year, depending on the need. We'd be happy to do that. So given that you have people waiting, let me conclude this presentation. We talked about the jail initially. Right now, our state of capacity for both of our facilities is 1,600 beds. If you, if you look at a 10% vacancy factor being required so that you can, for security purposes, move inmates around and have vacant beds to place them in, it's practically 1,440. Our population reached 1,759 this year. So we're almost 300 over our practical capacity. We were criticized by the state of California on their audit for being understaffed, undersized for the number of people that we have. It's not a management issue. We just have 300 inmates that we really don't have room for. As you're aware, we've released five days early about 3,500 inmates since the overcrowding started to create a little bit of a, a little bit of a gap there and a little bit of a margin within a jail. Most of our common housing areas now are full of bunks. We used every square foot of space you could reasonably use, but it's created problems for us. In our increment two package, you'll see that there's a request for 14 sheriff service technicians. The reason is that we used to be able to lock down housing areas because there were nobody in the common areas. And we could monitor that visually through, you know, through our CCTV system, but you didn't have to have somebody physically there. Well, now they're physically there and you have to watch them. And we don't have the staff to watch them. SSTs are less expensive than deputies. They'd stay in a control booth and call for help if they needed help. But without that supervision, it creates a liability issue for us. And another area that that manifests itself is the level of violence within the facilities. When you begin to pack inmates together, and like LA County with their riot experience, when you don't have a way of separating groups of inmates into small groups you can manage, violence increases. They start to annoy each other, infringe on each other's personal space, get on each other's nerves. So just in the last year, inmate assaults have gone up 104%. Staff assaults have gone up 73%, and mutual combat's 25. The practical impact of that is that every injured inmate, every injured deputy sheriff creates medical costs, liability cost, and drives, drives the bottom line just, you know, in spite of the fact that that's not our primary consideration. It certainly is a consideration.
Sheriff Brooks, just real quick, are those numbers taken like from the same month? You know, July of '04 and July of '05, you know?
They're, they're the calendar year of '04 and '05.
Okay, so everything during the calendar year?
Yes.
And the inmate population in '04 relative to the inmate population in '05, how much did it change?
Inmate population in '05 reached 1,759. In '04?
Kathy, do you know what the top was on that?
It was about 15, averaging about 15,30.
Okay, about 15,30. So it's 200 more.
So a numerical increase would somewhat be expected because we have more inmates.
Right.
But this is still much more.
But it's geometrically greater than the rate of increase.
Yeah, but percentage-wise, it's still greater.
Because the number of inmates you can actually keep in two people's cells, you have a very low level of violence. The minute you start putting them in common areas, it begins to peak geometrically. So the CEO has allowed us to continue on with the design process for an expansion of Todd Road. We are also considering a modular interim facility. If we, if we can't wait, we're very much hopeful about the state bond money for construction that may be on the, an initiative on the ballot in November. That failing, we would have to look at other measures. But we want to make sure our design plan is ready and we're competitive and, and we can be the first one in the door. We have an overcrowding problem. We have the site available. We have the plans, so the design will be completed. And that should make us, you know, qualified entrants for that money if it's available. Just a brief mention about the dispatch center. We want to thank your board for the quick support in the CEO's office and all the county agencies that helped us when we had sewage flooding our dispatch center downstairs. We're in adequate temporary facilities in the general services building. We really appreciate that. The dispatchers are thrilled to be there. In the long term, that needs to be, again, a capital project because we don't have an EOC at all anymore in the dispatch center. Eventually, we need to give that space back to TSA. So we have to look at some, some facility relief in that regard. On a patrol perspective, crime has gone up, Part 1 crime, which is the more serious category of crime, 8% this year. We're used to decades of declining crime. That, again, is a trend that, you know, a lot of people are experiencing. We're having to cope with that increased workload of the crime issues with 69 fewer patrol officers than we did in 2002. So it's put a real demand on our staff and...
Actually, unincorporated.
In the unincorporated areas. All the cuts had to come out of unincorporated areas. The increase in crime also is reflected in an increase in gang violence. And most of our violent crime, our serious crime, our homicides, come from gang or drug incidents that go wrong. Homicides have gone up 60%, rape 57, and robberies 55 from 2004, 2005 in our jurisdictions. So, you know, that's something that we're coping with as best we can. We don't have a targeted unit to deal with that anymore. And we have a sparser patrol population. We're doing the best that we can.
Could I ask a question about a statement you just made, that all shortages have to come out of the unincorporated area, you know? So do you weigh, when a city that is asking for more officers, do you weigh the need versus the needs in the unincorporated area? Because essentially, it takes an unincorporated area officer and puts it in a city.
The, if you're talking about on the assignment end, we have contract cities that have passed in their budget new positions, and we tell them we can't fill them because we'd have to take somebody out of either the jail or county patrol to do that. One of the cities just withdrew that position after a year of having it vacant. So they're all minimum deployments. We will fill them all.
Okay. Because obviously, we're very concerned about the unincorporated bounty.
Right.
And to hear it said that, well, of course, it all has to come out of the unincorporated. I don't know how to get it back into the unincorporated.
Right.
I see that's later on in your, in your discussion.
Well, the position's loss came out of unincorporated areas because the cities pay for what they get.
Right.
So those black, those overlap beats basically disappeared out of the county areas.
Yes.
But we don't, we don't vacate a minimum deployment county beat to supplement the city and just leave that beat on care for it.
And I would think that the county is paying also for the unincorporated services.
Mm-hmm. All right.
Thank you.
So with the, the issue of reduced coverage, Priority Zero is a life-threatening call. You know, that's a 911, somebody's breaking in the window, somebody's attacking me right now kind of call. In 2003, our response time in the unincorporated areas was 11 minutes. It's increased to almost 13 and a half, a little over 13 and a half. That's an increase of 20% in our response time now that we have fewer county beats, which is logical, obviously. In the county areas that surround the cities of Oxnard, Ventura, and Port Wayne, Amy, there are only three beat cars that work that entire region, all the way up to the Santa Barbara County line. There was just a recent article about a homicide that happened under the construction of the Santa Clara River Bridge, you know, and they were calling for additional patrol. Well, they're, you know, they're lucky if they get any patrol, frankly. There just isn't anybody to put there. That beat has such a large geographic base, it's very difficult to focus on any one area. And Oak Park is, Supervisor Parks is aware of, we had a recent domestic violence that resulted in a beating. The woman was beaten almost to death. The husband ended up taking his life when we got there. But the response time is 25 minutes. If a call goes out, an emergency call goes out, and it's either shift change, where the, you know, unit's heading into the station, or they had to go to Ventura to take somebody to the hospital, or to book them into the county jail, or another adjacent car's on an emergency call of their own, 21 to 25-minute response time is not unheard of.
I just have to comment, and it's completely unacceptable. And, you know, I don't know about, I heard it was shift change. Do you still, do you actually take off the street during shifts, changes? I mean, so you don't have the continual presence on the streets because of shift change?
There are overlaps, but in that case, the person, we're leaving the person being, you know, in that beat, was actually responding from the station as well, and they both responded. You don't have an adjacent car close, close enough in that situation that could have backed up. If we, you know, we will in some cases go mutual aid and request a city for support on a call like that, if we know the magnitude of the call at the beginning. At the time, the severity of the call wasn't known. So it's not uncommon that that happens. It is unacceptable. And I have a solution for it.
Good. I'm looking forward to it.
You probably can't afford it.
Thank you.
What we recommend on that is, is a, we, we understand the limits on the county. The overlap car was a step down from, from having two-person cars in the county area. It was, it was the first level of cuts. And that worked fairly effectively because during a briefing, there was an overlap car between two beats. So there was somebody to cover the adjacent beats as they did whatever they had to do. The overlap car, we've modified that again and restricted it to just a 12-hour overlap that cuts in half the cost and would assign an overlap to the busiest 12 hours of any given shift to be able to cover during that period of time. So that is an increment two request that we have on there. It's about a $3.5 million expense, but would cover, county-wide, it would cover and reinforce the unincorporated patrol response significantly. Crime Lab, you know, I'll be very brief with this, but we've asked for two forensic scientists in our crime lab. The crime lab processes all of the evidence for all of the agencies in Ventura County. And the real problem has been, first of all, in DNA, which we started up with grant funding that we no longer have, and secondly, dry drugs. And the two work cooperatively. If we fall behind in, in either one, you get some support from the other. The problem has been in dry drugs, we have reached a point where we're behind 1,000 cases. That means a nine-month backlog. But when you're backed up nine months, it means cases going to trial or dismissed for statute of limitations, or defense attorneys started asking for jury trials on every case, knowing you can't produce the evidence quickly enough. We believe with two forensic scientists, we could begin to whittle away at that backlog, bring it within a reasonable level. And that's why I've included that, along with some scientific equipment in our increment two request. And then the final thing that I wanted to highlight was the backlog in criminal warrants. We have 50,000 criminal warrants misdemeanor and felony unserved in Ventura County. If we don't show due diligence in attempting to serve them, the courts eventually drop the warrants. We know that people that are out on warrants are far more likely to reoffend, to commit crimes. We only have one deputy assigned to that 50,000. And his job is to filter information out to patrol deputies who, if they happen to run across these people at a traffic stop or another contact, will make an arrest, but nobody's physically out looking for them. We used to have a warrant detail. It's one of the things in the future we'd like to see reinstituted when we're, when we're capable of doing that. And that all goes back to my precursor comments. We recognize this is the very beginning of a turnaround for the county, and you have a number of priorities, and you have negotiations coming up, and, and all the things that you have to judge. I wanted you to know our operational issues and our priorities, so you can keep those in mind, whether it's for this year or in succeeding years. There are things at some point need to be addressed. But once again, the emphasis for us is, we really need help filling the vacancies we have. We really need help keeping the people we already have. And we need help on the, on the realm of civilian employees. The SSTs that were requested for jail overcrowding and the forensic scientists, I can hire at those levels. They're, you know, their salary ranges, they're, they're a little bit less, but the fact is, they're easier classifications to recruit out of, out of our recruiting pool within Ventura County. Those would at least eliminate two potentially crisis areas for us without getting into vacancies that I couldn't fill, even if you chose to award those at this point. So I want to thank you for your support during the year. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be able to make this presentation a little bit early. Yes.
Yeah, I just have one quick question. And you touched on it a little bit, and that is, where, have you taken a look to see where you could fill positions with civilians? Is the criminal warrant division something qualified and, you know, trained civilians could fill?
Right.
Some other police departments, I've just heard, I haven't studied their statistics, are going more and more to civilians and filling, you know, obviously, the administrative processing, management sides that they can fill. So that, in the recruiting difficulties with deputies, there, you really can focus on that and get them out in the streets to serve the public.
Yeah, absolutely. Before the first deputy sheriff position was cut, we went through a exhaustive analysis of the entire department on that. And we took positions that were fiscal positions that previously had been done by foreign personnel, administrative positions, and transferred those into civilian positions everywhere that we could. You know, warrants, for example, they're actually going out and making arrests. They have to be deputy sheriffs. The people that process the warrants are civilians. Everything a civilian can do in our department, we try to have a civilian do. We try to restrict that deputy sheriffs only do what deputy sheriffs can do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Supervisor Michaels?
Just one quick question. I should know the answer to this, and I do not, and I admit it. Do we charge the other agencies for the processing in the crime lab?
No.
Why not?
We've looked at that with the CEO's office in the past. It's a policy decision on behalf of the board, whether they would do that. It does open the arena. A lot of our funding for the crime lab is through grants that we received, only because we provided a regional service. So if we charge somebody for it, we could lose that grant money and actually be worse off than if we actually charged them.
Yeah, we're, we're well aware of the results of, the unintended consequences of an action. I just wondered if we did and why we did not.
Yeah, it's only been about a year since we took a very serious look at that. And there is a report that we could provide you on.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes, if I could ask, Sheriff Brooks, you, just at the end there, you were mentioning something. I was trying to examine your supplemental request and stuff. And you said, there's some things that you can do, you can fill right now. Others are positions that you can't fill them anyway, you know, at this point in time.
Right.
Could you break that down for me again?
Well, basically, the positions that we could fill right now are the two forensic scientists. There's one deputy involved in the... There's one deputy involved in the recruiting package. We could take care of one. And there's 14 SSTs in jail overcrowding. And the civilian positions, we could go out and recruit. We have people in the pending queue or could find them fairly quickly. It's the deputy sheriffs that are difficult for us. Deputy sheriffs and dispatchers.
What about the overlap car?
The overlap car is in your budget package. That is a supplemental request.
I'm just saying, in relation to the question Supervisor Bennett had, if you it was authorized, you can fill it?
It would take a while to do that.
It would take a while to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments?
What we could do in the interim is try to fill it with overtime if we had enough people to work the overtime. So you could get some immediate relief, but would take a while for full-time salary deputies to be filling those cars.
Just a quick comment, and I know we're way behind, but I appreciate the report and the straightforwardness of the discussion, and I think it's important that we do have these conversations with departments that we're in an odd position with because we allocate the money and then it's kind of a hands-off thing, and we don't get to understand the true issues that you're dealing with. So I appreciate it, and I think this was very well done, and we have our work cut out for us now.
Sure.
Supervisor Flynn?
Just make one comment. We do have a policy to have a reserve, and the reserve is going up to 15%. I'm trying to hit that number. But a reserve is a good idea. I don't have any argument with it. But if we have a reserve, we continue to build it up and up and up, and at the same time, we don't have enough people in a jail, enough deputies in the jail to do the work that needs to be done, then there has to be some give someplace, and that would be from that reserve. Maybe 60 or 15% is too high for us to do that. So that's what I'll be thinking about when we do the budget.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you for the report. I would note the reserve is a one-time fund source, whereas obviously adding positions or filling positions, if we can do that, is long-term and continuing.
No, I would, that's another argument we'll have later. I don't think it is all one-time money.
We'll do that, we'll get it next. And I do agree with you that that is the whole purpose of the reserve, is so that in these kind of emergency situations that you can pull from it, so you don't have these huge gaps.
One of the things that we've done cooperatively with the CEO in this past year, for example, the fires and the other operational, you know, things that we had that weren't part of the budget process, is he gave us one-time money, putting us off to a budget cycle where we could ask for permanent money. And so one-time solutions have worked because everybody's worked hard on making them work.
Right.
But let me just say, this is assuming all that money that goes in the reserve is one-time money. That's not correct, but that's for a future debate.
Yes.
Right. One thankfully I don't have to enter into.
Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
And that.
Thanks again for the time.
Yes. And I do apologize for those in the audience that have been waiting for our 9:30 item. Let's get right to it then. Our next 9:30 time certain is, Carol Dean Williams, you have two minutes and 13 seconds.
Carol Dean Williams, 61-year resident. Each of you board members needs to go through the booking process. You guys have put me through the booking process seven times, never been charged, never been prosecuted, and this last time, the deputy gave me five seconds to ask the question and arrested me, and state law said that I had a phone call coming within three hours. That phone call was denied me. You supervisors need to be booked in the Ventura County Jail and see the process, sitting here asking these dumb questions. Experience it. Get the experience.
For some reason, I've never particularly wanted to get booked in a jail. Thank you for your comments. You still have a little time left. We'll now move on to item 24, and this is a good thing. It's recognition of outstanding CalWorks participants. And I know that we have the Ventura County Commission on Women, which will help us in congratulating our outstanding CalWorks participants. Each year, the commission asks each of the Ventura County Job and Career Centers to nominate one participant who exemplifies the success of the program, and today we are here to recognize those. And I'll come on down, and if you'd like to go forward, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the commissioners for giving us permission today. Good morning to each of you. Supervisor Long, Supervisor Flynn, County Executive Officer Nicole, Linda Parks, Steve Bennett, and Judy Michaels. Thank you so much. We really appreciate that. We're very pleased to be here this morning to honor a very special group of women. The women that we are honoring today represent the hopes and positive outcomes of the Ventura County's welfare reform effort through the CalWorks program. This year, the federal government has reauthorized the TANF program for needy families, and at the local level, we are waiting eagerly for the new regulations that will come with that. We hope that these regulations reflect the realization of the fact that there are many long-term personal challenges that people must simultaneously overcome, such as low self-esteem, no work experience or skills, low educational achievement, domestic violence, substance abuse, physical and mental health challenges, all basically the effects of poverty. And I think one of the reasons we have this example today of shortage and increase in crime is because underneath all of that is the issue of poverty in our community. At the same time, while these women are preparing themselves for the world of work for self-deficiency, given enough time and support to address these difficult challenges, these families will firmly establish themselves on a path of being self-reliant, as the women we are honoring today have already demonstrated. We also wish to recognize the work of the Human Services Agency of our county, as well as the faculty and staff of the Ventura County Community College District for their day-to-day work with the CalWorks participants throughout the county. The women we recognize today and the people who support them are from all the job and career centers throughout the county. While we honor these very special individuals, we must remember that they are representative of the many other success stories. I feel privileged to introduce you to these special women, and I will ask you for them to join me as I call their names. I would also like to introduce the commissioners who are here today from the Ventura County Commission for Women.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Sheila. Is Sheila here? Sheila Bibby. Sheila is from the Oxnard Center, and she's a permanently disabled grandmother raising her three grandchildren, along with her permanently disabled husband. Sheila requested housing in April of 2005 as her family was living in a two-bedroom place, and one of the grandchildren was sleeping on the floor in the living room. With the assistance of the Job and Career Center, she now has enough bedrooms for all the children. Sheila deeply cares for her grandchildren and continues to provide for them. She is very grateful for the CalWorks support, which has enabled her to do so. She is strong, loving, a wonderful grandmother, and much deserved of the acknowledgement for her continued help for her grandchildren, and we wish to congratulate you and thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir.
And she's represented here by Maritza. Heather is a 21-year-old mother of a three-year-old. When she applied for CalWorks, she had worked only one job, five months as a cashier. She also attended Cal Lutheran University, majoring in criminal justice. She completed school this month and is receiving her BA degree in criminal justice with honors. She has maintained a 4.0 grade point average while still caring for her son and working as a student aide at the Ventura County Juvenile Center. She will be starting a new job with the Southern California Gas Edison Company as a land service assistant, earning $21.60 an hour. Maritza will. She was already enrolled in Santa Barbara Business College, studying to be a paralegal. Prior to her time on the CalWorks, she has held only part-time jobs. Vicky now has two jobs as a paralegal for two different law firms. Her goal is to become a notary public and to complete her paralegal certification. She wanted to be a role model for her own children and to demonstrate how important it is to stay in school and show them what hard work can really accomplish. Vicky stated that her experience at JCC was very positive, as she never looked down upon her situation but was only encouraged. And we're delighted to honor you today. Thank you. Martha must be working today.
She has an interview.
She has an interview, which is great. Martha is a single mother of three children. She started CalWorks program in December 2003. Her goal was to complete the Child Development Program at Oxnard College, which she did complete last spring. She faced challenges during this time with many family problems, limited English, and other obstacles. She will continue to attend school for her AA degree. Thank you, Lori. We all know this lovely familiar face, ladies. Donna Sanders.
How are you? Nice to see you.
Donna has had many problems in various areas and has served time and has undergone drug rehab. She has experienced other health concerns as well and seems to be able to, a stable job to plant closure. As a single parent with two children, she found it difficult to return to work without having a major part of her check go to childcare, leaving little for other costs and other needs. On May 18, 2006, Donna received her Associate of Science degree in computer information from Oxnard College with a 3.94 GPA. Donna plans to continue her education at Cal State Channel Islands. CalWorks resources have helped with educational transportation and expenses along with childcare costs, and we're really proud of you.
Thank you.
I'm going to say not Juanita. She's working.
She's at work.
Did not get off work.
And she's a 34-year-old mother of four children. She was struggling in an abusive relationship and was finally able to break away from the relationship. In December of 2004, Juanita's eldest son, Francisco, suffered a stroke and was paralyzed on half his body. She was forced to stay home and help to care for him. After about a year of recovery, Francisco has returned to school. Most of her involvement with CalWorks, Juanita has maintained employment. She has worked for Taco Bell, Robinson Macy's, May Company, and Western Dental, where she is employed presently. She currently is the sole receptionist at a very busy dental office. Juanita has successfully used the program to have better quality for her family and to keep them healthy. Thank you very much for coming here and giving our work. Lisa Valverde.
Diana.
Lisa is a single mother with two children. She, her son is 18 years old and will be graduating in June this month from high school. He has a part-time job as well. Lisa's daughter is 14 years old and currently in independent studies due to medical issues. Lisa has overcome homelessness, her children being removed, drug addiction, divorce, and was a reentry student. Lisa was enrolled in 18 units this semester while she offered, when she was offered a fiscal technician position with the Ventura County Tax Collector's Office. She started work on 11706 full-time and was making $11.18 an hour. She is still enrolled in nine units this semester and is working toward her associate's degree. Last semester, Lisa took 15 units and also worked in the JCC as a unit clerk and then got the work-study job. She was taking her hardest classes altogether, and she got a 4.0 grade point average. She graduated from Ventura College. Great. And she has also been accepted to attend three universities, and she hasn't decided which one to choose. She's currently applying to Cal Lutheran, her first choice, and she plans to get a bachelor's degree in sociology. Lisa has also received several scholarships and was featured in the Santa Paula Times, receiving a special scholarship from the Ventura College Foundation. We want to congratulate you. That's everybody? I just want to finish up my remarks. May I add that the county was able to continue to have, if the county, we hope that the county is able to continue to have the flexibility to have the diverse range of programs to train and educate and move participants into the workforce. As the program's key strengths are identified, it is important that any proposed changes by the federal government preserve and enhance these strengths, including a strong work incentive, a broad range of work-related activities, childcare, and other supportive services, and a safety net for children. CalWorks can only be called a success if its recipients who leave are working and able to provide for their family's needs. Thank you again on behalf of all of us for this opportunity, and a very special thanks to all of those who contributed gifts today. Trader Joe's, Camarillo, from Camarillo, Sanderberg, who contributed Mary Kay products, Dennis Phillips from Jack Mandel International, and Hallmark. They've all made a big contribution, and we want to thank you again for giving us this opportunity to come before you. Thank you. We're all going to go up there.
I'd like to, if I might, while you're organizing, thank the commission for every year coming forward and bringing these wonderful recipients and graduates, and it's very rewarding to hear the success stories.
We're losing some people in the back. They're hiding.
Spread it out.
Just because all those women are fighting for the back.
We can expand the book.
All right. All right. All right. All right.
Our next item is item 25, and this is Carol Dean Williams has a card. Carol Dean, you have 1 minute and 28 seconds.
Carol Dean Williams, 61-year resident. One advantage of attending these board meetings since 1986 is that I've seen the transformation from welfare to CalWorks. And the attitude, oh, welfare, they're on welfare, they're on welfare. So you see? Do you get a lesson from this? It's kind of like what you've done to your ordinance. You give things names, and then your conduct matches the names that you give them, and the word "welfare" isn't a good name. Thank you.
Our next item is our Greek festival celebration, and we're celebrating the Greek Heritage Week, which is June 5 through 11.
Yes, we are, and we're celebrating the festival. Thank you. And oopa! And it's so great to see Lynn, please come up to the podium. Lynn, Micolatos and her husband Mike, who own the Greek at the harbor and who do many, many, many wonderful, good things in our community, but truly are significant part of the Greek Heritage Festival and the Greek Festival that will be taking place this weekend. I mentioned this morning, and speaking of Greek heritage, the ancient Greek government, the role of the Greek community, the Greek history in government, as this is election day. And I mentioned there specifically that the city-state of Athens created the first democratic government, and the Greek city-states created after that and included certainly Rome, where there was the experiment with giving I had to read this, I have to read this. The experiment with giving the poor people more power at that time because of Greek government that said, "We should all work together. We are all equal. We're all part of the of governing our communities and our future." But that just speaks to, I think, the importance of continuing to honor tradition, honor the culture, and to celebrate with our wonderful Saint Demetrius Greek Orthodox Church this Greek Heritage Week and the Greek Festival. The church was established in our community in October of 1977 on the airport grounds. But the wonderful good news is now they're looking at and have acquired property to build a new Greek church and Greek community campus at the corner of Santa Rosa and Wood Creek Roads in the city of Camarillo. They're certainly led by 175 of the Greek Orthodox families, who are supporters and active with the church, and Reverend Father Gary Caraco, who joined the parish in August of '04. They are they are working to celebrate this most successful Greek celebration this week and to honor their traditions and their culture and to honor the community that they live and work in. It is one of my very favorite festivals. They'll start out with a for those of you who are runners, and I know Mr. Johnson has participated in the past, with a 5K, 10K, and one-mile run, and this benefits food share. And it's wonderful. They do they do this every year. It'll take place June 10, Saturday morning, 8:00 a.m. Is it still out at the airport grounds?
Yeah.
Where it starts, Lynn? Yeah, you maybe mentioned that a little bit. And of course, the festival includes the wonderful music and costumes and dances of the Greek heritage and the Hellenic sounds of Los Angeles and the Saint Demetrius youth dance groups. And this theme this year's theme is the ancient art of having fun. And after today, we should all have a little fun and be able to say, "Oopa! Eat great food, wonderful desserts." Children's games are included, so it really is a family event to honor all Greek Americans in Ventura County, celebrate with them, and have a triumphant festival. Lynn, I'll step down with a board resolution if you'd like to speak a little bit about the upcoming activities.
Thank you very much. And as usual, I brought you some samplings of our homemade pastries that the ladies are busy packing and getting ready for this Friday's event. And of course, we we do make sure that we request them to take all the calories out. So what you're sampling is totally calorie-free. And I've included some posters and some free passes and information and applications to the run, so we hope you'll come out and enjoy the fun. We've got some great new dancers this year, too.
And we celebrate with you.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you. Yes, oopa! Thank you so much. My my daughter was able to work and gather up enough money that she's going to get to go to Greece this summer. I'm so jealous. It's just such a wonderful thing to be able to do.
Well, my daughter's there right now.
Isn't that great?
So, yeah, it's a it's a great place, and after the Olympics, they've really made a lot of improvements in the moving around of people in the Athens area. So there's a tram now that we should look at for the Los Angeles freeway. They have a tram down the middle of all the major roads that goes from the airport all over the Athens area.
That's wonderful.
So they didn't have any infrastructure either, so if they can do it, we could do it.
There you go.
They could make a trip from the best.
Yes, I think so.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you this weekend.
Okay.
Come back again next year, and we'll be on time. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Lynn. Appreciate that. We'll move on to item 26. Carol Dean Williams, you have a card. And you have 44 seconds left.
44 seconds. Carol Dean Williams, I can't believe that we overlooked the most important contribution of Alexander the Great, the Greek language. The Greek language was the world's language. I don't know if English compares to it as being a similar world language, but he brought the world one language that gave us the book that we call the New Testament, originally written in Greek. So I'm a little disappointed that Kathy didn't point this out of that contribution, because that's probably what led to democracy, just as English.
Your time is up, Mr. Williams. Thank you.
Mid-sentence?
Thank you very much. Our next item then is our item 26, and Mr. Matheny will look at the ordinance for delegating authority. We have a motion, and we have a second. Thank you. Great report. Passes unanimously.
That's why he was back there.
Our next item is item 27. Also, this is Mr. Matheny regarding training and education for achievement by children. Teach Fund Awards. Ah. Oh. Thank you.
Well, I'm confident that there will be people pouring in here at any moment. They're outside right now gathering. I'm so pleased to be in front of your board again this year to give some recognition to these scholars who have come out of difficult circumstances. As I believe we mentioned in the board letter, the Teach Fund, I'm also pleased to report, has grown to over $400,000. And it was this board that really authorized the formation of Teach back in 1994. So a wonderful pat on the back from me to you, because without that, I wouldn't have had the blessing of being able to participate in all of this. It's it's one of those wonderful things where it just goes around and touches everyone in a very positive way. And particularly in this world at this time, we seem to have a shortage of things that are very positive. So to be associated with one of them is a joy indeed. We have five scholars that are here today, and they're all going to be enjoying a reception over at Marie Callender's. They're generously hosting this for pie and coffee or soft drinks or tea. And if you want to play hooky for the rest of the calendar, you're invited. John? Yeah. And are my kids here? Oh, there they are. All right. And Supervisor Bennett, would you help me? You've been outspoken in your support of foster youth in the area. The first person I would like to have come up here and receive a certificate is Alicia Gillen. Alicia? And there is another member of, well, actually, it's Gillian, isn't it? There's another member of the Gillian family, Alicia's sister Mercedes. And we have Kathy Murray here. And we also have an individual that I, what is the word? Gave. Four-letter words are have been blocked out of my vocabulary. I gave a certificate to at a ceremony that the Ventura County Community Foundation, who manages our money, put on for us, and that is a young lady that this is her fourth year of receiving a scholarship from us, and she has just about finished with her undergraduate work and is planning to go on and get a master's degree to cap it all off and is interested in maybe some probation work. So I am particularly pleased to recognize again the recipient of the Ernest Popenek Scholarship, which is a supplemental amount over and above the basic scholarship, which brings her total to over $2,500, Ms. Kizio Rodriguez. And I would also like to introduce the members of the committee that I am so privileged to work with. And if I have not seen somebody, then please forgive me. But Rhonda Newman is here. And Cameron McMillan back there, Linda Bowman, and Linda Huddle, Lynn McIner, Mo Mosley, and Charlene Turnbull. Anybody I forget or didn't see because I don't have my glasses on? All right. I'm so pleased.
And on behalf of the board, I know of all of us, really appreciate the role that Lori has played in terms of coordinating this and the committee in terms of making this happen. And why don't we step over here for a picture, and why don't we have your whole committee come down? We'll be in on this picture. All right. And I'll shoot this. How about you two come down? Can you go in steps there behind camera? Two adults from this side go in step behind camera. You have to be much better. On step. Step behind you. Oh, wonderful. I'll shoot this, and then I'll run over there. One? Two? Three.
Okay. Everybody got cheese? All right. Now, could you say macaroni? How about cucumber? Okay.
Congratulations.
Keep up the great work. Thank you very much for that. Our next item on our agenda then is item 28, and that's approval of excess county-owned real property, the sale of that. Mr. Williams, hi.
Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the board. Mr. Nicole, Steve Williams with Public Works. Well, today's action is the final and third and final action your board needs to take in regard to the approval of the sale of a former Camarillo courthouse property owned by the county to the City of Camarillo's Community Development Commission. Your board approved the notice of intention to sell this property four weeks ago. The notice has been published as required by the state code. So today is the day to, again, to take this final action. The City of Camarillo approved the deal back in April, I believe, April 26. So without further ado, I would recommend that you go forward with this action.
Move the recommended action.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Thank you. Seeing no objections to that, it does pass. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on it.
Item 29 now is our, let's see, watershed protection district, and this is regarding the upgrade of the protection river, Ventura River.
Good morning, Chair Parks, board members. Mr. Nicole, for the record, my name is Jeff Pradam with the Watershed Protection District. Out of respect for time, I can skip the presentation, go right to questions, or if you'd rather can do a brief presentation. To tell you overall, we've reduced impacts and improved flood protection.
I have a question. Just looking at the long-term, you know, plan for this area in terms of the fact, I guess what we're looking at here is increasing the height of the bank, if you will.
That's correct.
And is this what we're kind of looking at long-term, that this will be the plan for dealing with the higher water levels during storms?
It is.
And that are there other alternatives besides this that might be considered?
Well, there are other alternatives. We can move the people out. We can put flood walls up. We could move and channelize the river, but overall, this was determined to be the least environmental impact, the most protection.
Okay, so that's how we handle it then, is just by increasing the heights of the walls? Okay.
This is an existing levy, and it has been determined as far as the target risk, and it would be pretty significant risk.
That's correct.
Okay, and I guess as we go down, you know, going to do that upstream, downstream, it's just a kind of the beginning of a way to increase the capacity, I guess, is the way we're looking at it. Okay, because when it comes to us this way, it's kind of where you see one piece of it, and I'm just looking at the overall. I know we had something similar, I guess, also in Thousand Oaks, and we were able to work with the residents to help the viewshed impacts associated with it, too. Okay, thank you for answering my question. We have a motion.
Move the recommended action.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Seeing no objections, that passes. We'll move on now to our public hearing regarding our county rates, service rates, and I'll open the public hearing. Do I have any public comment cards on this? We do have one. Thank you.
Good morning, board members. Again, I'm Paul Dursey from the County Executive Office. I'm here to present the County Executive Office Consolidated Rate Letter and two basic recommendations, and that is to adopt the resolutions on attachments 1 through 8, and then the read-proposed ordinance, which is attachment 9. And the consolidation, this is the consolidation, and our role in this regard is basically to prepare and consolidate all the different rates from the different agencies. Frankly, most of the work is done in the departments doing the rates, and Robert Quong in County Council and Tom Dawson in the Art Controller's Office do most of the real legwork regarding evaluating the rates and evaluating the legality of the rates. So our role is really to consolidate and coordinate the effort and put a board letter together for your for your board to make some sense of it. The the presentation, I hope, the board letter-
And the consolidation, this is the consolidation, and our role in this regard is basically to prepare and consolidate all the different rates from the different agencies. Frankly, most of the work is done in the departments doing the rates, and Robert Quong in County Council and Tom Dawson in the Art Controller's Office do most of the real legwork regarding evaluating the rates and evaluating the legality of the rates. So our role is really to consolidate and coordinate the effort and put a board letter together for your board to make some sense of it. The presentation, I hope, the board letter is pretty explanatory, and if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them. And we do have a number of members of the departments who could answer specific questions. If you have specific questions regarding rates, they are here to answer those questions also.
For the most part, it seems as one would anticipate, rates and fees are rising, but I do note that the CEO clerk of the board does have actually some decreases, so my compliments there. Thank you. And I also note that we are now having a fee for, a proposed fee, that you can now buy a wedding ring when you go to get married, and it's only, and it's only $8.25. Now, that's a man for you. Buy an $8, $8.25 each, so you've got a special deal on wedding rings if we propose this. Thank you.
Exactly.
So are there, do we have any questions on this? We did receive this back in mid-May, so that was helpful to be able to look through it. Not, I don't, we don't have any, I have one, oh, that's right, we do have one card and one speaker, Jennifer Forkish, and she's here. And she's representing the California Grocers.
Yeah, I'm speaking before I begin on attachment nine, the point-of-sale accuracy fee increase. As I was introduced, my name is Jennifer Forkish, and I'm with the California Grocers Association. I represent hundreds of grocery and convenience store operators in Ventura County, and I'm here to voice concern over the proposed 40% increase of the point-of-sale accuracy fees. As many of you know, other counties in the state operate under the guidelines set forth under Assembly Bill 889, and do not charge or would not charge as much as the proposed Ventura County fee. Actually, Ventura County proposed fee would be the second highest in the state, and all the other counties perform the same function as Ventura County. So the association remains unclear as to why the fees need to be raised so dramatically. The Grocers Association is confident that should the board pass the re-score inspection fee along with the late penalty fee that is also included in the ordinance, that the $270 fee may be able to be reduced if you're accounting for costs in other areas. And this is not the only fee, by the way, that is being passed today that impacts us. There's also a 3% health department fee, which also represents an impact to the industry. So while we're speaking on one particular issue, obviously, the industry looks at it from a global standpoint of the overall cost of doing business in Ventura County. So I'd like to close with the fact that CGA would like to ask that this issue be tabled for one week with the amount of time that I had to get members here. They're all very interested, as Jim knows, over 10 of them attended a meeting with him. So me being here, they pay me to represent them because they get paid to run a grocery store, but they would definitely like to be here next week to voice their concern as well. And finally, we ask that any fee increase be spread out over a three-year period. Many people are not aware that grocery stores operate on a 1% profit margin, so any fee increase would have an impact on the industry, so we ask that that be spread out over a three-year period. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? I'd like to hear staff's response, please.
Marty Robinson with the Resource Management Agency, Waits and Measures is a department within the agency. And I do want to provide your board with this little handout, and I won't, because some of these questions have come up. I'm not quite sure how some of the numbers are being used. As you know, the board policy is basically full-cost recovery on our fees. And the fees that we are proposing for the scanner-packer program, in fact, are not even at the full-cost recovery level. We have sort of restrained ourselves because when we looked at coming forward with the fees, we looked at what was out there in the industry with the other communities, and we said, well, that would be too much greater of a leap. So staff basically restrained themselves relative to coming to you. We have not had a fee increase in this particular area for three years in the scanner area. So as you can see by this handout, the direct, the direct costs are identified, and the amount that is not covered by the fees that we are currently proposing is $89,000 a year. If you include a full...
I'm sorry, did you make one available to the representative? Can we do that?
I think she's got a lot more compassion left to complete.
Okay, I just want to make sure that she can follow along like the rest of us. Thank you.
I apologize. So just for a direct cost, we're out $90,000 a year on this particular program relative to doing the staff work out in the field.
With, are you saying currently?
With the fees that we are proposing today.
Okay, so with the increase, we're still running...
Right. And that's just for direct costs. If in fact, you know, most of our charges reflect all of the direct and indirect charges, and that would be, basically, we'd have to make up another $214,000 to cover this entirely. We have some, it's basically being covered, part of it's being covered from the, we have a net county cost within Waits and Measures every year. We have a net county cost that basically it gets covered there.
So out of the general fund?
Yeah. So anything that we don't cover with fees, you know, that's, that's all, and it is a policy decision about how much we want to cover with fees. So the next, the next slide...
Has that policy decision been made previously, or that was just a decision of the department?
Well, I believe, no. The policy decision about that we should be full-cost recovery?
Right.
That generally has been the board's policy.
Okay, thank you.
And apparently, we're not following it as closely as, as in some other areas, particularly with this particular area. So if we're at fault, we're at fault for not following the policy and creating it to be a higher fee. So if you look at the second slide, this really deals with, it says point-of-sale, but it deals with the packing and the scanning permit fees. Packing is whenever a grocery store packages their own material, they might package rolls, since they have bakeries, those kinds of things, those have to be checked for weight, et cetera, to be sure that there's not, they're not a violation there. So in addition, they have scanner fee, which we are talking about here today. With the new legislation, it changed on the scanner program, it dictated a certain methodology for pulling samples. I believe that the industry was concerned about locations that did not pull a random sample, a randomized sample. So therefore, in the new legislation, they dictated a methodology of pulling a random sample, and they dictated the amount that you would pull. So that increased dramatically. We had a three-tiered program here previously, and that program really had rates related to if you had scanners, if your organization had scanners from one to three, you had a certain rate. If you had scanners from four to nine, you had a certain rate, and if you had scanners, 10-plus. The system now is now going to, it's either one to three and then anything else, because the amount of product that you have to pull is 50 from anything in a, in a company that has more than three scanners. So therefore, the time spent there has just increased. If you look at this chart, you'll see that of the, in the packing area, we're talking about an 8% increase. The increase generates $2,800. I mean, this is really a small division, so I'm, we're not talking, we, the percentages might sound large, but they're very small dollars. In the point-of-sale or the scanner arena, the amount of increase for about 240 of the organizations will generate about $2,400. In the area that's the most impacted, in our calculations, I'm not sure where the 40% is coming from, because our calculation is the highest increase here is 35%, and that would generate basically $12,500. So overall, this, what we're proposing today generates about less than $20,000 across the board.
There's no way that they're less than $2,000.
Right. So, and then if you go to the very last slide, we were trying to reconcile some of the things that we had heard about increases and impacts it would have on some of the stores, and staff has been meeting with, as I think you saw in the write-up, staff has been meeting with individual stores. We tried to pilot various activities with them, we took them through the new scanning process, so there's been ongoing dialogue.
Kind of a quick question. When you look at scanners that are either one to three, four to nine, are those typically mom-and-pop stores, are those bigger stores? I would think the bigger stores are the 10-scanner stores. Do you have any feel for that as to typically...
Shinbel Perdang, RMA, Waits and Measures. Yes, I would say mom-and-pop stores are in the one to three range. Four to nine, you're looking at, for scanning, you're looking at a lot of fashion stores, the stores you typically see in the mall.
Okay.
Smart and Final, as a name of a food store specifically that would fall in that range.
Okay.
Groceries are almost exclusively in the 10 or more, large chain grocery.
Okay.
One thing I just wanted to punctuate is, and Marty did a good job, is the increase in cost. Before, on the four to nine, we were doing a 20 to 30 sample, now we're doing 50. The manpower required to conduct that inspection as a result of AB 889 has jumped. The grocers insisted on this change. We factored it into the cost of performing the inspection. You know, that's the reason for the significant increase in that one fee, is in the four to nine category, previously, we pulled a smaller sample because the counties had that discretion, and were able to conduct the inspection in less time. Now it requires more time, hence the higher cost, and that...
And we are attempting to look at if there's a way to do it more simply within the law. So staff is looking at, can they take a smaller sample and then determine whether or not they need to take the bigger sample? So they're looking at those ways of saving costs. Question? Are these annual inspections?
Presently, we're running upwards to 18 months between inspections at a given location.
Okay, now, are these charges...
Theoretically, they should be annual, but we don't have the money in...
I understand.
These are annual.
They're annual, and, and so is it $270 per scanner or a one fee for the inspection?
It is an annual registration, so we charge it once every year.
For 10, so is it $270 for 10 scanners?
Correct, I'm sorry. Yes.
So it's not 270 times 10?
No.
Okay. Well, that's one of the things that was, you know, a question, is this per scanner or is this? Do we have an idea of what the cumulative cost is, say, for one grocery store? Well, if you, on the last slide, we did take, Vons is the largest... No, 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 no. I'm saying there's more than one permit. There is... In terms of environment, including environmental health. Exactly. I, I don't know what that is off the top of my head. Would you do me a favor and get that information for the board? And get it back to the board?
You're talking about total number of permits?
Exactly. Because it's easy to say, well, this is only a, an 8% increase, but this is one of the permits and/or fees that they must pay annually to remain in business legally. So I think it would, put it back into perspective, from your numbers, it doesn't seem like that is, this one fee is that much of an issue. But I'd also like to know why we're the second highest county with Sacramento being the highest? Is it just our benefits?
I'll speak to that. Sacramento County's ordinance took effect in May of this year. All of the, most of the remaining ordinances have been in effect a number of years, and those fees have not been adjusted. Los Angeles County, for example, to the south of us, and they charge $300 for 10 or more, have not adjusted that fee in four years.
So we're looking to see these incrementally move around?
Riverside County, when they approach their boards to adjust those fees, I think you're going to see them all start to be shaped like ours. They'll reduce the number of tiers to two, because the sample size drives how long the inspection takes and what the cost is. You'll start seeing that whole four to nine category disappear because it's not really relevant to the amount of time or the cost of performing that inspection. And Riverside, for example, there's been in place two years. Most of these ordinances in these counties with these fees have been in effect for a number of years, and that's why...
Well, that's a logical answer. Thank you. So Supervisor, we'll take like a chart like this and add on the other fees that would apply.
Supervisor, if I could, I appreciate that there are, there are many fees, but you know, this back example here for Vons, you know, we're talking about a $40 increase in a store, in, you know, in Vons, and this is based on a request of the Grocers Association to expand the sample. So, you know, number one, you can't have it both ways. You want to expand the sample, you want more work done, you have to recognize there's going to be some cost involved in that. I would offer that as one thing. The second thing I'd point out is the end of our May 31st letter from the board, it indicates that almost half of the retail locations failed their point-of-sale inspection this past year. Almost half, 50%. And yet, you know, the public's out there with great confidence, and I, there are very few people in the public that are sitting there adding up what that scanner is doing. And we have a really important responsibility to, number one, make sure people aren't getting ripped off in those situations, and two, to keep people confident in this whole system of scanning and all that other stuff. When you have 50% of the locations failing their point-of-sale inspection, I think the public can make a very good case that we have got to do a much better job and really got, have to get more on top of this. So this is, this is a very modest fee increase, and I think it makes, this makes, you know, at least rational sense in terms of where we're going. And you hear some of those statistics like, you know, where we are relative to other counties when you hear, you know, that explanation. So I would be hard-pressed to think that we could make a case for the public that this isn't a good thing for us to move forward on, when you have 50% of the retail locations in particular failing. And overall, there is always, you know, an incentive to not have the inspectors funded, and the same thing used to happen with the meat inspection and stuff, to not have them funded enough. And I think this, this gets at the heart of what government's all about. It's the collective action of the people to try to make sure that we do something that individuals just can't do for themselves. We can't all go around and keep tracless scanners, et cetera. I just want to get that said.
Supervisor Michaels?
Yeah. I think my questions were misinterpreted, because I'm not, it's not that I'm not supportive. I wanted all of the questions that have been asked answered in public. In particular, the one about why we're supposedly second. And that's a very logical answer. If the law, people have not started yet to move their fees to meet the new demands, I think it's only fair to have that out, you know, in the public. I'm not too sure about all that went on with the Grocers Association and the law when it was being voted upon, because there's, you just can't know all that. So I'm not going to hold them, you know, in that light, but I do believe that if 50% of the sites that are tested are failing, that's not a good sign. And so perhaps, I won't, I was going to say perhaps we ought to go even higher, but let's, but let's stick with this one for now and see what kind of a result that we get with it. And I would say to the, to the Grocers Association, they need to be aware that if we are not covering all of our costs as per board policy, that we will have to look at that over the year or next year to see how we balance, you know, that with also trying to stay competitive as a, as an economy that people want to stay in.
My thought too is that if we are finding so many violations, if you will, and we're not checking annually as we should be, you know, how much is being lost, you know, how much are consumers losing as a result of our inability to get out there every year? And I'm sure that that's significant.
Just kind of a program update that didn't appear in the bulletin. When we first started, when this ordinance took effect three years ago, the average error rate was 8%. That was overcharges, undercharges together. Overcharges outnumbered undercharges three to one. Presently, we're running about a 5.4% error rate, and overcharges are outpace undercharges by three to two. And I would offer to you that enforcement's working.
Working.
The program's doing what it's designed to do. We are seeing an improvement in results.
And the public really needs to know that.
Interestingly, the failure rate has stayed just about steady, and I think we're seeing multiple overcharges at a single violation. We're starting to see the extreme violators come more into compliance. We had an informal office hearing with a convenience store... outpace undercharges by three to two. And I would offer to you that enforcement's working. The program's doing what it's designed to do. We are seeing an improvement in results.
And the public really needs to know that.
Interestingly, the failure rate has stayed just about steady, and I think we're seeing multiple overcharges out of single violations. We're starting to see the extreme violators come more into compliance. We had an informal office hearing with a convenience store, a major national convenience store, a location in the county, eight overcharges out of the twenty-five item samples at their location, no undercharges. We brought them in for an informal office hearing, discussed the violations with them, let them know what the path in the future included, and, you know, tried to, you know, get them to voluntarily comply and improve their pricing practices.
Just a question on that. If you multiply all the stores that this particular firm has throughout the United States, with that kind of overcharge, that amounts to millions.
What's the name of the convenience store? I mean, seriously, because, you know, why should we?
Circle K.
Pardon?
Circle K.
Because I think that's not, you know, I understand. But I just say, you know, the fact that because we are not being able to go annually, that we are allowing these things to...
They didn't have a policy to overcharge, right?
Not that we're aware of. With that, we have one more comment, Supervisor Michaels?
My comment to the industry would be, and I assume, I didn't have time to meet with the industry, but I would assume that the industry itself is trying to resolve the problems with the scanners and the error rate and all of that, and if they're not, they probably should be. Because the industry is always the place that can police itself and can do the best job because they understand more so than us, you know, what the needs are and how to make it better and how to have a lower error rate. So that's my word to the industry.
I know you're running short on time. I was retail for fifteen years. I've spent more time in the private sector than I have in government. The major department store chain I worked for paid a two hundred thousand dollars civil penalty for scanner overcharges. And I can tell you from being on the other side of the equation that, yeah, when you understand the system, when you understand what's in play, it is a lot easier and you should be able to fix your problems. And I know we did. We had a promotion called Buy More, Save More. You bought four related items, you got forty percent off; three related items, you got thirty percent off. Cash register brought up the lower price, relied on the clerk to identify and override to give the higher discount. The company reversed that. Now it comes up forty percent off, clerk has to override to give less. And, you know, there are a lot of different things at play, and the industry has unique insight to its own pricing systems and how it can fix its own problems. But, yeah, I've been on the receiving side on the inspection.
Supervisor Bennett? We have a motion from Supervisor Bennett. I'll close the public hearing and move the recommendations of staff. Do we have a second?
A second.
Yes, we have a second.
Interesting, how many of these overcharges have to be quickly reported to the district attorney?
There are different, as I understand, different rates or different kinds of violations. Some are a lot worse than others, and it determines the enforcement mechanism. We have a motion and a second, and seeing no objections, then that passes. Thank you for the input. Thank you for the comments, staff. Appreciate the information. I'd like to be able to take a quick five-minute break, and then we'll be right back.
Can I just read the title of the ordinance?
Yes, please.
An ordinance of the County of Ventura, State of California, adding Article nine point five to Chapter Two of Division Six of the Ventura County Code relating to consumer protection business permit.
Thank you with that. We'll take a really short break. Thank you.
I want to make a motion that we start having lunch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Morning Supervisors. Mr. Nicole. Todd McNamie, you're Director of Airports for the County. This is our rent and fee setting for next fiscal year for the Department of Airports. Three minor changes. One is a CPI increase to tie-downs and hangers in the amount of four point four six percent. This is also reflected in the budget, I think you'll be approving later on this month. Secondly, adjustments to our hourly rates, and I failed to supply that page which you were just recently handed, showing those adjustments when we're doing maintenance for some of our tenants and also on our grant billings. And mistakenly, I wrote county policy A eighty-seven, that's actually a federal circular, so I had to make sure that was cleared up. And last but not least, just making our copying fee consistent with the ordinance that you passed earlier this year. And really, those are the only changes to the rent and fee. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments?
There's not a boardroom full of pilots, you know, and everything, so life must be good.
No, this isn't a hearing, though? It is a hearing, I don't see where it says that, but, well, open the public hearing, got the report, and no questions or comments, and we'll close it. And then we have a motion and a second. Seeing no objections, that passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The commission and then the two airport authorities.
There you have it. Great. Thank you very much.
And when I first came on the board, and John will remember this, the room was always full of angry pilots and et cetera when we had fee increases. So, good job.
And that's, okay. Our next item, then, is our item number thirty-two. This is regarding our code enforcement ordinances. This is zoning and building codes. Good morning.
Good morning. Marty Robinson with Resource Management Agency. And since today's an election day, we're sparing you the PowerPoint presentation, and I'm going to just go over some high points of the general report. And then Chris will follow up with the second item on your, at your, at this time certain. And we will try to leave the most time for your discussion and questions. So with that, this report deals with two aspects of the county's enforcement activity, the zoning ordinance enforcement operated by the Planning Division, and the building and safety, building code enforcement operated by building and safety. There are other agencies within the county, including the Public Works Agency and the Fire Department, who have an impact on codes that affect land and the built environment. The report before you today, of course, does not address that. I know that some of those are areas that you may also have concerns with. Key points that I'd like to identify is, as you know, our programs are primarily complaint-driven. They're really on the reactive side of the scale of, from reactive to proactive. Within zoning, it's almost entirely complaint-driven. Within building and safety, there are occasions when the building inspectors are out and they notice something that they will then also follow up on. There are pluses and minuses to a complaint-driven program. One of the pluses is that it is generally less expensive than an alternative type of program. It has less staff, less funding. It requires staff to focus really on the areas that the community is really concerned about, because that's what they complain about. So therefore, you're focused on those areas. And it's also less likely that staff will be accused of just picking on somebody because they have the authority to so pick on somebody. So those are the plus side of the column. On the negative side of the column, the enforcement efforts can be uneven. You can have two property owners who are treated entirely differently because their neighbors have a different response to whatever they're doing. Violations may continue for years because nobody does complain. And then you also have the fact that those items, that lack of enforcement under either one of those situations, may result in people feeling that they have, that it is legal for them to do activity that it is not legal for them to do. So it has its downside, this kind of enforcement program. We have three full-time zoning enforcement field officers and some limited clerical assistants for the unincorporated area. We have three full-time building safety code enforcement officers when we're fully staffed. At the moment, we have one person out there doing it all. So we have three building safety code enforcement field officers and one paralegal who follows up with a lot of the work when we get to a point of working with the district attorney or working with the county council on civil or criminal issues. In addition, in the building and safety arena, the field inspectors handle the first part of the enforcement process. Zoning has over, currently has over seven hundred open enforcement cases. Those go back several years, about five hundred and thirty-five of those cases were prior to the year two oh four. So most of those cases now have notices of noncompliance on them, filed against the property. Building and safety gets about, has about nine hundred and fifteen active cases. The complaints that we receive, zoning, about two hundred, a little over two hundred, two hundred and twenty a year, eighty-five percent of those are verified as violations. In building and safety, we receive about six hundred a year, and I think about ninety-three percent of those are identified as violations. So there's quite a bit of activity. The kinds of violations, I think you're fairly familiar with. In the zoning arena, it's really that they've got illegal uses or activities in areas that are not zoned appropriately for those uses. They might be dumping, you know, prohibition, they may be doing prohibitive dumping. So they might be dumping stuff into the river, et cetera. They may have junk on their property that they're not supposed to have. Both zoning and building and safety have... Both zoning and building and safety have to deal with the issues of illegal dwelling units. People living in spaces that were, are not designated for dwelling. They can be barns, they can be chicken coops, they can be whatever. So we have that activity going on. They both have to deal with constructions without permits. Those are other activities. And we also have animal-related issues in the zoning, such as wild animals, as we're pretty familiar with recently, because we've had, you know, such an interesting couple of cases out there. But wild animals, wild and exotic animals being kept in areas where it's not reasonable to have them, nor are they permitted. I'm not going to go into any detail in terms of the process that we go through, but basically it goes from really trying to inform and educate. In both of these programs, we try to inform and educate, and at one end of the scale, and then at the far end of the scale is criminal or civil activity against the violators. In most cases, it does not get that far. The ability for us to spend the staff time to put together the cases to either support the county council in a civil action, or to support the district attorney in their actions, is pretty limited. Definitely, there are more building and safety cases that may go the criminal route than the zoning enforcement cases. So what usually ends up is that we have a notice of non-compliance on the property for the most part. If somebody is reticent to resolve their issue, it sits with a notice of non-compliance. That creates a myriad of other problems. As I said earlier, if they got a non-compliance, the people who complained don't think we're, you know, think we're doing anything, or that we have done anything to really fix the problem. The neighbors think that that's the way they're supposed to be doing business, you know, that their property can be handled that same way. So it may, in fact, snowball in terms of how we, in terms of the work we have to do because we're not able to stop people maybe a little sooner. There was comparisons with the cities in the report. We're a different body than the cities. We've got, we're an entirely different animal in a lot of ways. Some of the same issues that the cities, this overcrowding and use of facilities that are, were not permitted, is a similarity that we do have. Our staff has to travel quite a distance to cover the same types of violations that a city of a similar population would have. In closing this part of the item and allowing you to ask questions, basically, our staffing level is modest, as identified. It's modest, the program is limited. We do have another item on the board agenda to attempt to get some additional tools that we think will be helpful for moving some of these activities to a positive resolution. And that's the next item. We also were, in the budget process, the County Execs Office assisted us on the zoning, on the planning side. We had a half-time position. And in the budget that will come to you, in our base budget, that position has been moved to a full-time because we couldn't recruit for it because it was half-time and temporary. So it was really tough to get anybody to take that. So we've sort of restructuring how we're going to do enforcement, putting some additional enforcement activity with that expanded position if your board adopts our budget as presented. On the building and safety side of the coin, we have included a position as another enforcement field staff person, as an added item that your board can consider if you want to add it. We have pointed out, I think in this report, as well as in the budget book, that that, it fees currently, as your board just adopted, would be a 7.5 percent increase. And I believe if we had an enforcement officer, we would have to increase fees in building safety to 9.75 percent. And we have submitted both those fee schedules to the auditor controller, and they're just sitting out there awaiting whatever decision you ultimately want to make with the budget. So with that, staff is here to answer all the technical questions, and that's where we're at.
Thank you very much. Nice to see. Do we have any comments or questions?
Well, since I think I've got most of them in my district, I know I don't, but some days it feels that way. Some of the, some of the issues that bother me are the, I think staff does a great job. And legally, our hands are tied, unlike what some of the citizens think. You can't just walk in there heavy-handed and put somebody in jail or whatever. But one of the things that I don't have an answer to, and I'd like to figure out how to resolve, and that is what I consider civil harassment by neighbors. And I, you know, because we react to complaints, and you get a couple of people that don't like each other, and the complaints are non-stop. And, you know, even when, like grading, say the grading inspector goes out, says, "Nope, everything's fine," or, you know, remediate the site this way, and it's done, but the people keep calling, and calling, and emailing, and calling. And I have this particular situation in my district. What does, where did, when does staff finally hit the wall and say, "Nope, we've given you the answers, we've inspected the site, we're not coming out again"? Somebody answer my question, please. And I know we always have to respond, but, I mean, there has to be some sort of a, maybe we could charge people for making unfounded claims.
You first, you first started complaining for three weeks?
Yeah, and after that, you have to pay for the complaint to be filed.
Right. Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the Board, Mr. Nicole, I'm Chris Stevens with the Planning Division. That is an issue we deal with, not on a daily basis perhaps, but regularly. And we, it's part of the triage, which is the term I use when we're evaluating enforcement cases. And we have to exercise some judgment here at the staff level, and when we get to a point where we have inspected the property, drawn our conclusion, and perhaps that may take two depending, every case is different. Sometimes what they'll, you'll get a complaint on one item, that's resolved, now they raise another item. And so you have to kind of, as I said, use some judgment. Customarily, after an inspection, if another comes in and we're seeing this pattern, we will simply notify them that the complaint's been received and set that aside. Now, if they, you know, if they continue to come, and there's a passage of time, and there's more, we may have to go back and revisit the issue, but it does happen. And we try and address it at the staff level as opposed to bringing in the property owner that the complaint may be directed at, if it's not necessary. So it's a, it's a case-by-case situation.
Is there a lot of it?
I wouldn't say, and I can't speak for building and safety, maybe I'll let Jack Phillips get up and respond. I would say, it's not, it's not an everyday occurrence, but I would say there could be, you know, I would say maybe monthly, there may be a situation where we see a pattern developing, but it's not a daily occurrence.
Well, I think what's sad is the public doesn't understand that we don't have all the enforcement in the world. We don't have great numbers of personnel, and they don't understand that they're taking someone away from what is potentially a real problem, just with this keep-busy stuff. I had to, you couldn't respond, but I had to get that out there.
Good morning, Supervisor Parks, members of the Board, Mr. Nicole. My name's Jack Phillips, and I'm the Director of the Building and Safety Division. And as Chris has already pointed out, this is a particular element of our enforcement effort that is very real. Supervisor Michaels has put her finger on something that we deal with on a regular basis. On the building side, our regulations are, seem to be a little more clear-cut, perhaps, than in certain areas of zoning. So we usually can point to a particular element out of the building code. A lot of our requirements or violations are resolved by obtaining permits. And when people do that, then we can advise the complainants that the issue has been closed. They've obtained the proper permits, obtained the inspections, and as far as we're concerned, the issue is resolved. We do have a term for some of these activities. They're called spite complaints that we use, where one neighbor will then complain against the other, and then cause complaint back to who they perceive to be the complaining party. Again, as Chris mentioned, we try to resolve these at the staff level as best we can. We do want to be responsive, of course, to real violations and enforce the building code appropriately. But when it gets to the point where we have resolved a building code provision, if they're looking for more ammunition to use against a neighbor, for example, we will tell them that, that we've gone as far as we can go under our ordinances, and if they have further complaints, they may have to consider civil action or something like that to resolve it. So unfortunately, not all neighbors get along well with one another, and we have to take a balanced approach as best we can and enforce the regulations that we do have. We do wrestle with it, and it does happen on a regular basis.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, do we have a motion? To receive and file?
If we had any other comments or questions. I mean, the whole package here, I really view 32 and 33 as part of the package. So perhaps I'll make more specific comments with 33. But one, I appreciate that this has come forward. Two, the one thing I believe, and I might, might suggest that we include this in the motion, if I can word this properly, is that it's just a sense of the board that the status quo isn't good enough. I mean, when you're sitting there with 600 and 700 open cases, and the public sort of feeling like we're, you know, a paper tiger when it comes to zoning, particularly when it comes to the zoning stuff, that we've got to have improvement. And so we just sort of, you know, as we, as we accept this, that we say, we, you know, we want to be on a steady plan of doing better, and we want it to, 33 is one step, but we don't want to limit it to 33. So I guess I would, you know, the recommended action is just review and discuss. It doesn't even say receive and file, but I think I'd say, I'd make the action to receive and file and direct staff to improve our current system and keep coming to us with improvements in our current system, because our current system is not acceptable to the board. So that'd be my motion.
On 32, there's a recommended action, though. Did I miss something?
32, it says, review and discuss the report. Staff presentation. 33 has recommendation and discuss.
Oh, I must have it reversed in my book, I'm sorry. I must, because I'm looking at 32, and it's true recommended action.
And that would simply give staffs a clear direction that the board is saying, "We want change."
Yes, I did.
Supervisor Michaels?
A question that can be answered later, maybe by email to all of us, but of the backlogs, kind of break down whether they're serious, not so serious, maybe it's one of these multiple complaint situations, and they're open cases, but it's part of a larger picture? If you could kind of just break that down for us, to help us understand, you know, what are, what are you facing? And then as you start looking for ways to improve, you know, maybe there's a scale of, you know, prioritization on some of these.
One comment. I think that's why I said with the motion is we need to be a bit more proactive. But one of the areas where we really can't get a hold of, I think, for a number of reasons, is overcrowding in residential homes. And in some cases, renting out bedrooms. Some cases, using a residential home for room-and-board facility. Now, that, that sounds like it's on the extreme, but it happens a lot. When you walk through the neighborhoods, the biggest complaint in every neighborhood, practically, practically, at least in my district, is overcrowding, which causes a multitude of social problems. Parking, arguments between neighbors, in some cases, people even using a driveway without permission to park for the night. So it's, it's a big problem.
I guess, while we're, while we're on this discussion, I guess, I would, in my mind, I would find it hard to believe that if we can do a fee increase that would actually pay for another position, I'd be surprised that we wouldn't do that at budget time. I just want to get that out there. Maybe, maybe we would, but I would be surprised. If we can go from a 7 percent to a 9 percent fee increase and have another person out there to help address this, I would be inclined to go that way. It's my, it's not part of my motion, but it'd be my own thought.
We can save that motion for the future. It's not that time yet, but I do appreciate the report also, and we do sometimes have more unique code enforcement issues in the particular districts, I'm sure you're aware of. Where Oxnard might see overcrowding, we have concerns also with, particularly grading is a, is a big one. And to make sure that, you know, that if they're not permitted, that we're able to have some swift enforcement and repercussions, and also being able to repair also damages that have been done, so looking for all the tools we can.
One other comment, final comment that I'd want to make, is as you review the enforcement options, it's obvious there aren't great enforcement options. That's why we're in the problem that we're in. I mean, if there were easy enforcement options, we wouldn't be where we are. And so we have to be, I'm willing to be creative, and I'm willing to, you know, to try to find ways to make that work, and I think that's part of what 33 does. But, boy, the options are certainly not, not as clean as you would like them to be.
Democratic society, we just can't take a tank down the streets pointing guns at people.
Mussolini could get the trains to run on time and solve these things.
Well, I think it was, there was an issue between neighbors that got someone to drive a tank and go right through the guy's building somehow. No, we're not supposed to do that, but I can understand some frustration that people feel. All right, well, thank you. We have a motion to receive and file, as well as review and discuss, which we have, and...
And the motion also said it's a sense of the board's directing staff to make further progress, that the status quo isn't, isn't where we want to be, and we want improvements.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, and that motion passes with the addition of looking at how we can become less dissatisfied with this. Our next item, then, is follows up on, on just one of those types of solutions. Mr. Stevens?
Good morning. Yeah, you've already made a nice segue into this item for me, and I appreciate that. And the comments of Supervisor Bennett about staffing are greatly appreciated. I think, as we discussed in both the report you just reviewed and a bit in item 33, though, one of the concerns that we've been kind of dealing with is that even if we have more people, if we don't have the right tools, we're not necessarily being efficient and effective in what we're, in what we're trying to accomplish. And, and that's why we have the item before you today. And our recommendation is to add a, add a new tool into our tool bag, to see if we can encourage greater compliance. And the upshot of it is, is that if we can affect property owners' pocketbooks a little more, that perhaps we can bring about greater compliance. And some of our recent experiences are what really kind of led us to this point. Up until about, I guess it's been about three and a half or four years ago, that we started getting our billing system up and running as it should have been. Prior to that time, it was sort of kind of a catch-as-catch-can process. And at that point in time, I think we had roughly 1,200 to 1,300 outstanding violation cases. We got our billing system in order, as it should be, and began actually sending out bills just for staff time, not, not as civil penalties, just to cover our staff time as directed by the board. And as you see today, while our number is still higher than we would like, which is 700 to 800, it's significantly lower than where we were just three and a half or four years ago, because folks suddenly received a bill in the mail associated with their violation, that came in and said, "Okay, now I'm seeing something here, how can I resolve this and take care of it"? So we've made that progress, and staff, our position now is that maybe we can take it to that next step. What's remaining now are those folks that that billing didn't necessarily motivate them. As we described in the staff report, a lot of the violation cases have been very upfront with us, and simply said, "Your bill for $150 for your staff time," which is a, basically kind of a one-shot deal, "I'll gladly pay that. I'm receiving $1,000 per month in rent for the illegal business on my property." That's a no-brainer, as a, as a, as a property owner. And so we got to thinking about how do we address that kind of attitude? And the administrative penalties process was something that, that came up. It's a process that exists today in our Environmental Health Division, for example, through their COUPA program, that is their hazardous wastes and underground fuel tank programs. They establish a, basically a schedule for those. They establish a, basically a schedule for those penalties, and in talking with Bob Gallagher of our Environmental Health Division, they feel it's been very effective in bringing about compliance and getting people to come into the county and deal with the problem, because they do accumulate, they can accumulate rather quickly. So what we're asking for today is direction from the board to begin work on putting together the ordinance amendments to get an administrative penalties process in place. We've worked with county council over the past couple of years on it. It's a fairly complicated process. There's a lot of state law and legal issues that need to be dealt with, and it will take a significant amount of work between planning staff and county council. And before we embarked on that, we wanted to get to the board and receive your approval to start that process. It'll be an investment of time on both staff's part to pull this together.
How much time?
Well, given the number, amount of time it took us to get to this point, it's hard to say, and maybe I'll defer it to county council. I mean, I think from the planning standpoint, we're in pretty good shape as to how we can fit this within our ordinances. And I don't know, it'll, in large part, revolve around their workload. So I might defer to council on that.
County Council?
Well, from our perspective, we would guesstimate maybe 50 to 100 hours of work, of attorney time on this.
What kind of timeframe for you to free up 50 to 100 hours of work?
That would probably have to happen over a period of two to three months, would be my guesstimate. Linda will be doing most of the work on it. How much time do you think it would take you, once you got rolling?
Yep, I would say two to three months.
So probably in the early fall. I mean, since we're dark in August, you're not going to have this done before August, right?
No.
Do you want to think about that?
Maybe October would be it.
So fall.
Anyway, to continue on, in the staff report, assuming that the board wants to pursue this, we identified kind of some issues, policy questions, that we think are important for us to get some guidance from the board on today, so that if we move forward, we're heading in the right track, and we don't bring something back to you that wasn't what you had in mind. And the, a couple of things that I mentioned, the hearing body, what we're, these programs are usually set up that there would be an opportunity for a property owner to appeal the administrative penalty. And our recommendation to you is that that hearing body be, in fact, the Resource Management Agency's enforcement officer, which at the current time is Jim Delperdang, whom you just heard from earlier this morning regarding what's going on in the weights and measures program. And furthermore, we're recommending that the decision of that hearing officer be the, what they call, the final administrative order. In other words, there would not be further appeals to planning commission or the board, that if there was further dissatisfaction with that order, we would proceed directly to the courts. I'm talking with county council as we were looking at this, that's a fairly common approach, and we felt a more efficient one in terms of getting us to where we want to be. The discretion of that hearing body, we're recommending that they, that the hearing officer deals strictly with the penalty and the amount of that penalty. They would not be charged with determining whether or not a violation existed. We would maintain our current process that is in ordinance for handling that. And that is a process where if a violator, or an alleged violator wishes to appeal our finding, they go to the planning commission, and then to the board. That's happened, the Salivian case that the board saw recently, the Catus case, those are probably the two most notorious, if I can use that term, of the planning cases. That process would remain in place, and the hearing officer would not be charged with that responsibility. Once that process is complete, then the penalty would, process would begin. So entirely separate, and that way, the hearing officer would not have to be steeped in the zoning ordinance and have to have this detailed understanding of the zoning ordinance, per se. What they will have to have an understanding of is the penalty schedule, how the penalties are applied, something that our RMA enforcement officers are familiar with already. So our expectation is that it would be a fairly smooth transition to start such a process. The other issue is the penalty amounts. It's typical that there be kind of a matrix for such things, that the penalty amount is related to the severity of the infraction and the length of time the infraction has been carrying on. And then you would have, so a simple outdoor storage in a setback that's been there for one month might have an administrative penalty of $50, but an illegal dumping in a baraka that's been going on for one year may have a significantly higher penalty. And we would recommend that we have such a kind of schedule in place, and we would work on that, and that would be part of the package that would be returned to the board. Collection of penalties is another issue. The recommendation here is that we put in place some ability for the county to place a lien on the property. I feel that that's a more persuasive tool for property owners. And then the last issue, the disposition of the administrative penalties, and that is where we do collect penalties, what happens to those. The COUPA program that I mentioned, they've established a trust fund, those penalties go into that trust fund, and they are then used to augment the enforcement program. They go right back into that enforcement program. That would be our recommendation to you today as well, that whatever programs we establish, if it were an administrative penalty for planning, it would go back into, to augment the planning enforcement program. If it were building and safety, it would go back into their, augment their program. So I think that covers, as quickly as I could, kind of the issues, and staff's recommendations related to those, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Michaels?
Not a question so much as a suggestion, and that is, whatever you devise for the matrix, it has to be clearly understandable and definable, because if you say that based on the length of time, what's the defining moment? The day you got the complaint the first time, the day you went out and ascertained that there is a violation, you know, when the neighbor says it started happening? So be real careful with those types of things that, you know, starting from the day that the violation was determined, that's how long? You know, because otherwise, we'll find ourselves in court more often than we need to be, and I'm sure you all can be very succinct, because, like the issue, I mean, people say this has been going on forever, one of the ones in my district that we're dealing with. And maybe it has, but maybe it hasn't. Who knows when it really started? So it really has to be, I think, something we can define. Some action by the department triggers the timing.
Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you. You have on page five of six of your report, right in the middle, you have a small paragraph, and it says, "If the board directs staff to proceed with developing an ordinance amendment to establish administrative penalties process," which I certainly support, right, that, you say, "It's important that staff be given specific direction on the policy issued described above, especially should the board wish to address any one of these in a manner different than recommended by staff." I don't want to address these any different than recommended by staff. However, in some of your paragraphs, you clearly make a recommendation, and others, you have a discussion that implies a recommendation but doesn't make it, and so we don't have any misunderstanding. If I could go back through, on page three, hearing purpose, I think the last sentence, the last, you know, line, and the last half of sentence says, "It's strongly recommended by planning staff that two hearing processes be kept separate." I think that's the recommendation. In the second one, you have two recommendations. You say, "Planning staff recommends that RMA enforcement officer be designated the hearing officer," all right, "for the code enforcement penalty hearings," and then you refer the recommend that his decision be final. So I've got, that's what you have out of that paragraph. In the next one, hearing body discretion, you have no direct recommendation in there, but you say, "The issue of whether there was, in fact, a violation," this is in the middle of the paragraph, "violation would not be before this hearing body, is that determination would have already been made under existing procedures." So I assume that's the recommendation, correct?
Correct.
It doesn't say recommendation, okay. And then, under penalty amounts, your last sentence is very clear, "Planning staff believes the penalty schedule would be appropriate," okay? Under your next one, under lien collection, you say, "The board should give serious consideration to such a method of collection." I assume that's the recommendation.
That's correct.
Okay, great. And then, over on there, you're very clear on deposition of administrative penalties, that it's recommended the planning commission, that penalties be used to augment, et cetera. Okay, so, with that, I think, I really applaud this. I think as long as we're clear that that's what you're recommending, I would direct the planning division, the local county council, per the recommendations that we have verbally identified here, and you've identified in writing, to prefer, you know, the adoption and amendment. So that'd be the only thing I'd add to item one, direct the planning division to follow the direction of...
Or declarative sentence.
Yes, yeah. Those declarative sentences.
Great, we have a motion in a second.
So to accept staff's recommendations with that second.
Yeah, I, that was good to pull those out, because I was undermining the same thing and putting numbers to them. I came up with like seven recommendations, six or seven, depending on how you split the hair on the penalty section, but that clearly gives you direction. So I'd second the motion.
Thank you. I know this has been long in the works to come before us, I'm really glad to see it arrive, and I know it'll take a little bit longer to get it to completion, but thank you for all the work on this.
Well, should we have cleared our recommendation? We'd like to have this back in two weeks.
You can include that.
We do want it in the fall.
In the fall.
Okay. I was waiting for Linda Ash to say, "No."
She's quick.
Okay, thank you very much for that. We have a motion in a second, and then that passes unanimously. Okay, I think that puts us to our closed session items, is that right?
No, probably.
We do have some discussions regarding our union negotiations.
No, we have no reports for the day.
I see, then we are done with our day? Hearing no objection? Our meeting is adjourned to our next meeting.